Shelley can do roll call please.
Fernando can you leave some invocation please?
Dear Lord, thank you for our community. Thank you for how well we work together. Please help us to do the very best that we can represent this community to the best of our ability and help us to make the most out of what we have. In this name we pray.
Freddie can you send the.
Yes Mayor, thank you. The legions through the fabric of the United States of America to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
First of all, welcome to everybody and we're going to start with a summary of current events and we'll start with council. Jesse will start with you on the line.
Thank you Mayor. The only thing I want to do is thank Michelle Pettit and that group there that did the spring fling. That was an amazing turnout. Hopefully they got some pointers for next year and I look forward to what they can do. That's all I have Mayor, thank you.
Fernando?
I have nothing to report Mayor.
Thank you Freddie.
Thank you Mayor. Just a couple of words on, as some of you may know, I'm a board member of the Center for the Arts here in Globe. We had our meeting yesterday, our annual meeting to vote on new members, new board members and so I got there a little late so I didn't get the names but we did accept the membership. And speaking with staff, it sounds like there's an uptick in walk-in business so that's a good sign. They were pretty happy about it, the gallery manager seeing the amount of volume of participants or not participants but patrons coming in. And so with that, there was a conversation of parking spaces being taken up and I hope that's a sign that our downtown area is starting to revive and I know not all the parking is there for everybody but I think it's a good sign to see that our parking spaces are starting to fill up and instead of business personnel that are upset about no patrons, now their good problem is that their patrons can't park in front of their store because there's so many patrons. So I guess that's a good thing. But overall, I just wanted to let everybody know that the Center for the Arts is open. They do have some nice crafts in there and some great artists that come in here and in this community and provide some good artwork for viewing and for sale. So if you're an artist or you have that taste, then visit the center. Thank you.
Thank you Freddie. Mike?
Mr. Mayor, I don't have anything for tonight.
Thank you. Mike?
Yeah Mayor, I want to piggyback my Jesse's side. It was really busy downtown. Nice to see a lot of people. I didn't get to step out and look but I had a lot of patrons coming for that and I did see some pictures and what have you and there was a lot, a lot of people. So I want to thank everybody for attending that. What a great turnout, it was really good. And I want to thank McSpadden Ford too for helping out with that. They did a raffle over there. I think you won it. Congratulations. And I want to just do a shout out to PD Empire. You guys are always on the ball. Thank you for what you do and keep it up. No cheap alters is a big problem. But no, thanks guys, appreciate it. That's all.
Thank you Mike. Yeah, I also want to commend and also the hard work that was put in by I think it's Michelle Petit and Rachel Swenson on the spring fling event. I wasn't able to attend it. When you have grandkids, they have their priority and you're, so I was out of town but I did see a lot of the pictures and it looked like it was pretty full in that area. You know, that's what it's about. It's about our residents, it's about organizations taking the lead in a lot of these events that come up. We got our Historic Preservation Committee that has done amazing work to bring up, that we'll see some of their work tonight. The Arts Commission is working hard to bring events and art to our community. We have the Downtown Association, the Chamber of Commerce and the Center of the Arts. This is what it takes. People need to take the lead. If there's an event out there, take the lead, do the work and these are the results, what we saw with the spring fling. I understand the work it takes. When we used to do the Firehouse Car Show, it took nine months to get it prepared before it actually happened. For two days, nine months of work and a lot of work. So it is, so it's good to see that people are getting excited, residents are getting excited and hopefully we'll see more things come to our community as hopefully we get back to some kind of normalcy. Just on COVID, they reported Health Department only 10 cases since the first of the month, which is tremendous. Hela County is doing great. I can't say very much for the rest of the state. They're still seeing about 700 cases a day. They're still seeing some critical patients in the ICUs in the Vanner Hospital in the Valley and it's mostly the younger generations that we're seeing but for our community, we're doing a great job. And I want to recognize Jane Metlove, manager for county, in the audience. Thank you for attending. And that's all I have. Paul?
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council. Speaking on COVID, as we discussed before and starting on the third, the city is going to shift to some changes. We'll be opening up the water office magistrate, library will go to the next phase. Any members of the public coming into a city facility will be required to have a mask. Any employee working with a customer or resident needs to have a mask. Internally, employees who are working together in close contact, less than six foot, if they both agree that they feel comfortable working without a mask, then they're going to be allowed to take those masks off. It's getting warm out there. You may see a couple guys in a pickup truck traveling somewhere. If they're okay with it, we're going to allow that PD in the offices here. I think it's important to let them make those decisions. If they feel comfortable, then they're allowed to de-mask. Because we are having such, you know, having a good turnout in Hela County. The, let's see, what else? The, I know, okay, so Active Adult Center? I think we're going a little bit slower there. I think we're going to start with some separations in May where they're eating but separated out. And museum, we're trying to get opened up to seven days a week. We still have a position open for a second person out there. Anybody who wants to have a part-time position, it is working weekends. We're still taking applications for that. And let's see, I think that's everything on COVID and on us relaxing our requirements in lieu of the changes of the situation right now.
What about the library?
Library is taking up to the next phase, which would be almost pretty much open. I'll check with them but library is doing good. And then the last thing, as you can see, the sidewalk on the north end, the north side of Mesquite, as you come down near Broad Street, we got that jackhammered and then we have a contractor in there laying cement today. I saw the cement truck coming down the way. Should be done very soon. In addition to that project, we will also be placing stop signs there on Broad. And so right now, it's a one-way stop because it's a one-way street. There'll be a three-way stop. So north and south on Broad will now be, come to a full stop. It's getting very busy. A lot of people going back and forth and parking and everything so we don't, we want to make it as safe as possible for that crosswalk right there.
Paul, the extent of that project, is it the roadway to the paving or is it just realigning the parking on Mesquite where they're doing the sidewalk?
I think we're realigning the parking and going to lose I think two slots because we're going to parallel parking. Yes, so. And we know about that. I know we had a lot of discussions about that but in order to get the fire truck down there safely, because we're extending the curb out and make sure we have enough room, we had to do away with angled parking. But I think it's a loss of two slots. But it should be much safer on Mesquite, much safer on Broad Street and that whole busy intersection there. Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, that's all I have for you.
Thank you Paul, just an add-on on COVID too. You know, ever since the governor took the power away from the mayors to issue proclamations on mask mandates, there's still businesses and that still require you to wear a mask in their facility or their place of business and there's still people within the community don't feel comfortable without a mask at this point. I just ask that we continue to respect each other's opinions and how they move forward with a mask mandate. I think eventually they'll phase out but for now.
To the best of our ability and help us to make the most out of what we have. In this name we pray.
Freddie, can you send the pledge?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Loyal Legionants through the power of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
First of all, welcome to everybody. And we're going to start with a summary of current events and we'll start with council. Jesse, we'll start with you on the line.
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing I want to do is thank Michelle Pettit and that group there that did the spring fling. That was an amazing turnout. Hopefully, they got some pointers for next year and I look forward to what they can do. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Fernando?
I have nothing to report, Mayor.
Thank you, Freddie.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of words on, uh, as some of you may know, I'm a board member of the Center for the Arts here in Globe. Uh, we had our meeting yesterday, our annual meeting, uh, to vote on new members, new board members. And, um, so I got there a little late, so I didn't get the names, but we did accept the membership. Um, and speaking with staff, it sounds like there's an uptick in walk-in business, so that's a good sign. Um, they were pretty happy about it, the, the gallery manager, uh, seeing the, uh, the amount of volume of participants or, uh, not participants, but patrons coming in. Um, and so, uh, with that, um, there was a conversation of, um, parking spaces being taken up and, um, I hope that's a sign that our downtown area is starting to revive and and I know not all the parking is there for everybody, but, um, I think it's, it's a good sign to see that our parking spaces are starting to fill up and instead of, uh, business personnel that are upset about no patrons, now their their, their good problem is that their patrons can't park in front of their store because there's so many patrons. So I guess that's a good thing. Um, but uh, overall, I just wanted to let everybody know that, uh, the Center for the Arts is, is open. Um, they do have some nice crafts in there and some great artists that come in here and in this community and provide some good artwork, uh, for viewing and for sale. So if you're an artist or you have that taste, then, uh, visit the, the center. Thank you.
Thank you, Freddie. Mike?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I ha- I don't have anything for tonight.
Thank you. Mike?
Yeah, Mayor, just a I want to piggyback my Jesse's side. Uh, it was, uh, really busy downtown. Nice to see a lot of people. I didn't get to step out and look, but I had a lot of patrons coming for that and, uh, I did see some, uh, pictures and what have you. And there was a lot, a lot of people. So I want to thank everybody for attending that. What a great turnout. It was really good. And, um, I want to thank McSpadden Ford too for helping out with that. They did a, uh, a raffle. Over there, I think, Linda, you won it. So congratulations. Now I just do a shout out to PD Empire. Uh, you guys are always on the ball. Um, thank you for what you do and, uh, keep it up. No cheap alters is a great thing. Um, but no, thanks, guys. Appreciate it. That's all.
Thank you, Mike. Yeah, I also want to commend and, and also the hard work that was put in by, I think it's Michelle Petit and Rachel Swenson on the spring fling event. I wasn't able to attend it. Uh, when you have grandkids, you're on it, you, they have their priority and you're, so I was out of town, but I did see a lot of the, um, a lot of the pictures and it looked like it was pretty, pretty full in it, in that area. You know, it, that's what it's about. It's about our residents, it's about organizations taking the lead in a lot of these events that come up. We got our Historic Preservation Committee that has done amazing work to, to bring up, uh, that we'll see some of their work tonight. The Arts Commission is working hard to bring events and art to our community. We have the Downtown Association, the Chamber of Commerce and the Center of the Arts. This is what it takes. People need to take the lead. If there's an event out there, take the lead, do the work. And these are the results, what we saw with the spring fling. I understand the work it takes. When we used to do the, uh, Firehouse, uh, Car Show, it, it took nine months to get it prepared before it actually happened. For two days, nine months of work and a lot of work. So it is, so it's good to see that people are getting excited, residents are getting excited. And, uh, hopefully we're, we'll see more things come to our community as, uh, hopefully we get back to some kind of normalcy. Uh, just on COVID, uh, it, they reported Health Department only 10 cases, uh, this, since, uh, the first of the month, which is tremendous. Hela County is doing great. Uh, I can't say very much for the rest of the state. Uh, they're still seeing about 700 cases a day. They're still seeing some, uh, critical patients in, in the ICUs and in the Banner Hospital in the Valley. And it's mostly the younger generations that we're seeing, but, uh, for our community, uh, we're doing a great job. And I want to recognize Jane Metlove, uh, manager for county, he's in, in the audience. Thank you for attending. And that's all I have. Paul?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, um, speaking on, on COVID, um, as we discussed before and, and starting on the third, um, the city is going to shift to, um, uh, some changes. Uh, we'll be, um, opening up the water office magistrate, um, library will go to the next phase. Um, any members of the public coming into, to a city facility will be required to have a mask. Any employee working with a member of the, uh, the, um, a customer or a resident needs to have a mask. Um, internally, uh, employees who are working together in, in close contact, less than six foot, um, if they both agree that they, they feel comfortable working without a mask, then they're going to be allowed to take those masks off. Um, it's getting warm out there. You got, you, you may see a couple of guys in a pickup truck traveling somewhere. If they're okay with it, we're gonna, we're gonna allow that, um, PD, um, uh, in the, in the offices here. Uh, I think it's important to, to let them make those decisions. If they feel comfortable, uh, then they're, they're allowed to de-mask. Um, uh, because we are having such, you know, uh, having a, a good turnout of, of, uh, um, in Hela County. The, um, let's see, what else? The I know, okay, so Active Adult Center? I think we're going a little bit slower there. I think we're going to start with some separations in May where they're eating, but, but separated out. And museum, we're trying to get opened up to, um, uh, to seven days a week. Um, we still have a position open for a second person out there. Anybody who wants to have a, a part-time position, it's, it, it is working weekends. Uh, we're still, um, taking applications for that. And, um, let's see. I think that's everything on, on COVID and on us relaxing our, um, requirements in lieu of the, of the changes of the situation right now.
Um, what about the library?
Library is taking up to the next phase, which would be almost pretty much open. I'll check with them, but library is doing good. Um, and then the, the last thing, um, as you can see, the, the sidewalk on, um, the north end of, the north side of Mesquite, as you come down near to Broad Street, uh, they, we got that, um, jackhammered and then we have a contractor in there laying cement today. I saw the, the, the cement truck coming down the way, uh, should be done very soon. In addition to that project, we will also be, uh, placing stop signs there on Broad. And so right now it's a one-way stop because it's a one-way street. There'll be a three-way stop. So, um, North and South on Broad will now be a, come to a full stop. It's getting very busy. A lot of people going back and forth and parking and everything. So, uh, we don't, we will make it as safe as possible for that crosswalk right there.
Paul, the extent of that project, is it, uh, the roadway to the paving or is it just realigning the parking on Mesquite where they're doing the sidewalk?
There, I think we're, we're realigning the, the parking and going to lose, I think, two slots because we're going to parallel parking. Yes, so.
Very good.
And, um, and we, we know about that. I, I know we had a lot of discussions about that. But in order to get the fire truck down there safely, because we're extending the curb out and make sure we have enough room, we had to do away with angled parking. But I think it's a loss of two, two slots. But it should be a much safer, um, on Mesquite, much safer on, uh, Broad Street and that whole busy, uh, intersection there. Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, that's all I have for you.
Thank you, Paul. Just an add-on on COVID too. You know, ever since the governor took the power away from the mayors to issue proclamations on mask mandates, uh, there's still businesses and, uh, that still require you to wear a mask in their facility or their place of business. And there's still people within the community don't feel comfortable without a mask at this point. I just ask that we continue to respect each other's, uh, opinions and, and how they move forward with, with a mask mandate. I think eventually they'll phase out, but for now, let's just respect each other and make sure that we don't get irritated with people that do or do not wear masks. Thank you. Do we have our first community call to the public? This is a time where anybody can fill out a speaker card. Uh, they can speak on any matter, uh, addressed to the council. The council at this time cannot respond back to you in call to the public. We limit the time to three minutes. Uh, we can make recommendations to our staff in, in regards to any comments made. This is also a time that if you wish to speak to a, an agenda item, you can fill out a speaker card. And at that point, we can respond to you. Uh, we request to limit those comments also to three minutes. Uh, so give everybody an opportunity to speak. Do we have any call to the public? Okay. Okay, then we'll move on to guest presentation. Item 3A, council will receive and possibly give direction regarding a rehabilitation proposal by Structural Preservation Systems LLC for the Globe Community Center Swimming Pool.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, um, we're going to go to Eric, um, who is with Structural and, and, um, uh, a consultant also with him, a construction, uh, uh, from Indiana. Uh, before we do, just a, a quick overview of what we're trying to accomplish at this, um, of this item. We had, we have had Structural do a, a study of the integrity of the pool. Um, they had had a proposal a year ago, then pandemic hit. They're back today with a, uh, wanting to make sure that the proposal was still valid. It was up, been updated. Uh, what's changed, what's still doable? Um, uh, the purpose of this is to, to educate council in preparation for the budget process. Um, tonight is just to see what is, if it's viable and, um, uh, seek any direction on, um, on bringing it back if it's, if council so, uh, uh, desires, uh, but is not a final approval. Uh, there is no vote to be taken. Um, the, the key piece of the puzzle with this is, is, is it affordable? And, and that will be determined when we go through our complete budget process. And so with that premise, the, uh, let's see if, uh, Eric is, it looks like he's on the screen there. And so we'll let, um, let Eric take over. Eric, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Council, Mayor. Appreciate the, uh, appreciate the opportunity to kind of present on this. Uh, Paul, will you be sharing that presentation on the screen by chance? Or can you guys see it?
Yeah.
If we share it, we won't be able to see you, but.
Yeah, that's okay. Okay, that, Eric, it's, it's up there. I think we're good.
Okay. So I can, uh, I guess we'll advance, advance the slide if you could, please.
There you go.
So just a little bit about structural technologies. So, uh, you know, the umbrella of our company, we have kind of structural technologies which focuses on, uh, products, but the big part is the investigative services. Uh, that part of our company did the condition assessment. Uh, and then I work for Structural, which is on the contracting side of that. And you know, the big, the big piece there is that we're, we're big on, you know, finding out what the root causes, especially with this pool and understanding if it can be repaired or not. Next slide, please.
Everybody here okay?
So, okay, yeah.
Just, uh, um, Eric, you're, um, just your strong voice, it kind of fades in and out a little bit. I'm not sure what's changing compared to your mic. But, um, just so we can get a, a good clear read on your, on your voice. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, so the project team, uh, so Structural, so we're the, we're the concrete repair guys. And then we, we also brought in Natari Corporation, who is a pool manufacturer and supplier and Simmons Swimming Pool, which is a certified installer of their systems. Next slide. So just a, a brief history, uh, 1950s, the swimming pool was originally constructed. In 1980s, the, the pool was renovated. Uh, in 2014, there, there was a study done, uh, that really focused a lot on the ADA requirements, uh, the lighting markings, mechanical systems and the pool shell. Again, that was, that was back in 2014. Uh, the pool was also closed in 2014 due to excessive leaking. Uh, and then when we got involved in 2018, 2019, we conducted, conducted a condition assessment that focused primarily on the pool shell and the pump room. Um, and that included doing destructive and non-destructive testing to get closer to that root cause of, of, you know, what, what was causing it. Next slide, please. So I'm just going to walk you guys through the process, uh, next, next slide on, on what putting this thing back together looks like. So the first thing is restoring the structural integrity of the pool shell and the pump room. Uh, so there's a ton of concrete repairs, crack repairs. Um, and then there's also some voids underneath the floor of the pool shell, um, that will, will be addressed in the repair side of things. So step number one, get that pool shell and pump room back to structural integrity. So the next step, demo and removing the existing gutter and plumbing components. So we're basically going to be removing four feet, a four-foot perimeter around the pool that includes the existing gutter system, which was one of the primary reasons why there was a lot of leaks there. Uh, we're also going to remove the top of the pump room, uh, as well as all the, the, all the pool mechanical side of it. All of that's going to be removed. Next slide. Uh, so in the, in the pump room, again, the old system is going to be removed and we are actually going to use the existing pump room as the new spot for the, the new filter for the pool. Next slide. So after all the, the old plumbing's out, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna put in a new gutter. Kind of, if you can see this, if you can see the screen, it's gonna look similar to this, gonna be slip resistant. Uh, it's going, it's, it's a lot more efficient system. Uh, it's continuous skimming action, surge wares. Uh, the surge tank is not required and it eliminates a significant amount of perimeter piping. Next slide. And then here's a visual of the new vacuum sand filter that's going to go in the pump room. So this is a, you know, this is designed and basically prefabricated, shows up to the site and we are going to use that pump room footprint to house this, basically. So in normal situations, this thing is, you know, you're excavating a hole and you're putting this in there. Um, you already have a, a hole in the ground, so we're going to utilize that. Next slide. So once that filter system's in, basically all new plumbing is going to be ran so that we're not going to be relying on any of the existing, uh, piping that's there. Uh, new ladders are going to go in, backfill around that, that same box that was on the previous slide. That's basically going to get filled in around the, the filter system. Uh, new concrete's going to be poured all the way around, uh, new depth markers, uh, through the design process, a new coordinator, an auto fill system. Uh, so, so now you have all the components back on the pool and we're basically going to prep the deck and we're going to put a new slip resistant coating on the pool deck. So it's going to look brand new at the end of the day. And then that, next slide, please. And, uh, the last step is going to be putting in this new PVC membrane liner. So it's basically a flexible blanket of PVC that's reinforced. Um, it's going to completely seal the pool. Uh, it's, I mean, it's going to look like a brand new pool at the end of the day. All the lane markings, uh, and then after that, it's basically filling the pool up and kind of educating everybody on how the system operates. So I can't see which, I think you're on, so the estimated schedule of financial information, so on the, on the pre-construction side, because a lot of, between the gutter system, the, uh, the filter system, everything is designed specifically for this project. And it's gonna, between designing it and, and fabricating it and getting material outside, it's about two months to, to, to do all that on the front end. Uh, and then another four and a half months to basically execute the construction part of it. So about six and a half months all in and total investments, $1,080,000. Any, any questions? I, I I summarized pretty quick, but any, any questions?
Mayor?
Go ahead, Fernando.
So my understanding is this wouldn't be like a permanent fix, like maybe a, a new pool would last longer. How long would you think this pool would hold up with these types of repairs?
This, this would be a permit. I mean, we're talking 25 years plus.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Well.
Go ahead, Freddie.
Yeah, Eric, this is, uh, Councilman Rios, um, I just was glancing at one of your, um, slides and does this allow for competition swimming?
I, I believe, so that'll be something that would be addressed in kind of the design phase, but yes, there's certain things that we can implement to where I believe that can be done.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, Councilman Rios, there, um, the length of the pool is, is longer than, I think, the, uh, a competition. Uh, we had the, the previous pool had a bulkhead that was movable, um, that would make it the right length that was needed, whether it's 25 meter, meters, 25 feet. Um, and we're looking at what it would take to, um, uh, to add a movable bulkhead. The, the technology's changed, but, um, and there'd be a point in time we'd have to decide that. But there, before, um, if this was to, to make it to the budget and, and move forward, we would have a pre-meeting on many of these factors, um, about whether, you know, what is the use and, and what do we need to do, to do to make it most advantageous for us.
All right, thank you. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Councilman Pastor. I have a few questions for you. So, uh, the pump room, the, the photograph that you showed of the, uh, pump setup, how, how, how are you, how are you going to get that in, in, under the pool? Are you going to have to remove the old deck? And set it in or, or slide it in or what? How, how's that going to get to work?
So, so we're going to be taking the roof off of the pump room and we are going to be lowering it down into place.
Um, the other question I had was, uh, the PVC membrane, is that going to be like one solid piece or are you going to put it together like a puzzle?
It'll be put together like a puzzle. Comes in rolls and it's basically heat welded together.
It'll be welded together and, and what's, uh, how will it, uh, that, you know, when you put things together and they're in water for a long time, sometimes that's where your weakest point is, is where the two pieces come together. How are you going to prevent that, uh, possible leakage or, or deterioration of the pieces?
So I believe that once it's all in place, and again, I'm, I'm, I'm on the, uh, the repair side and unfortunately, uh, the Tari from the pool expert couldn't be on here, but I don't know, Paul.
Yeah, hold on to the train passes. We're sorry. We have a, we have a train, you got the train passing.
And they turn the, they turn the horn on every time they go by. Okay, I think they're gone.
Go ahead, Eric.
Clear. So I, I don't have the answer for you right now. I'm not the, I'm not the, uh, the, the pool liner expert, but the way that, the way that it was explained to me is that there, there's not going to be any, any worries of, of a leak. Once it's installed and the water's in place, that, that it's, it's not going to be an issue.
Eric, was it, was it Gregory or the, the other gentleman that, that talked about that in our pre-meeting today?
Um, yeah, it was, uh, it was Josh from, from Natari.
Okay, so and Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, what he described is these, these six-foot rolls of like 52 mil plastic rubber that they, they lay down and then overlap three inch and then use a heat mechanism, um, to melt, to seal it, to weld it in and then shape it. And, um, and then it tucks under the, the edge. And I'm, like I say, I'm, I'm not an engineer or a pool guy, but I, I know what I heard this morning, so I'll, I'll take the chance of explaining this. But it, it's, um, uh, I think the most important thing is they said, make sure you keep your chemicals right and keep the pool filled with water, um, all year round. And that keeps the, the liner in place and, um, uh, and stable, uh, pressed in place. And so I, um, it, it sounded, uh, like a, a pretty tough solution. Uh, and we even asked about what it felt like and it's, it's smooth and a little bit, a little bit rubbery to the feet. Um, but it's, uh, pretty much a, a sealed tight, um, as a, as a welded shell all the way up to the, to the trough. The, the other, and Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, the other thing is, I don't know if you know that it, at one point, the pool had a center drain in the bottom and that was unsafe to have one. So they put, lifted up, put up a double drain and then put a filler in there. So that filler's coming out, the double drain's coming out and the section in the bottom is coming out with the rebar and everything. While they replumb, uh, a proper drain in there, which will take it back down to its, uh, uh, depth that it needs to go to. And they'll also be pump, drilling hose, holes and pumping slurry into any void that they find under there. So there, that story of cavernous, you know, place where all the water goes, they'll look around the drains and find any voids and, and then pump slurry into those to backfill that underneath. So just wanted to share that. We learned that today.
Mike, do you have some questions?
Yeah, Mayor, thank you through you. Uh, does this include, uh, Eric repairing the kid pool that's adjacent to that?
This does not.
We're talking about the
We're talking, we're talking everything to run the, the, the primary pool. Um, we're looking at options on that area, whether it be a splash pad or something else or Ramada. Uh, we're also looking at, this is, this is a piece of the puzzle, but we're, we're looking for a, uh, a, a whole upgrade of, of both the, the, the pool area, that community center pool, and then areas around there. Uh, those will be talked about in the future, but this being the key piece of the puzzle, without this, it, the other pieces, uh, would, would change. We're, we're starting with this piece. But we will come back, um, as we go forward with, uh, the additional amenities and then the costs associated with, with those other, um, items that you're talking about.
Thank you. Jesse, you have any questions?
No, Mayor, not at this time. They've been answered.
Thank you. Eric, I have a few questions. Uh, I saw a 10-year warranty when you were talking about the pump system. Is that, is that specific for the pump, uh, system itself, 10-year warranty?
Uh, no, and technically, you know, when you talk about warranties in the, in, you know, a 10-year timeframe, you know, anything in, whether that be with, with the pumps or even with our type of work, you know, anything that happens within the 10 years that, that gets resolved, it's going to last much longer than that. And I think, I think Greg's on the line, uh,
Yeah, yes, I am.
I don't know if you want to, you want to speak to that at all?
I'm sorry?
I don't know if you want to speak to the, the warranty side of it in terms of 10, you know, if there's a 10-year warranty on the pumps, we'll say, I mean, you, you know, these, these systems, you, you've installed them, they're, they're, you know, they're in place.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, there's, there's actually, yeah, there's a 10-year warranty on the pump, but the key is water chemistry. You keep your water chemistry right, that system's going to last you 20 years or longer.
And, and Greg, you've been following kind of the conversation. Any comments about the, 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 the level and quality? I mean, this is, this is state-of-the-art equipment that we're placing that you normally put in new pools that we're, will be retrofitting this. Any, any comments that, that points you'd like to make from your perspective?
Well, actually, I just joined the conversation. I got a late, uh,
Okay.
A late email, but I just now tuned in. So I'm not sure what's been said nor has it been said.
Well, well, thank you for being here to answer questions for council. Eric, another question I have too is, uh, you mentioned the lift installed. What, do you have a picture of that or how does that operate?
It's a, it's a battery-powered ADA lift. I do not have a picture of it. There may be one in the, Eric, do you have one?
I don't have one, but I, I could definitely, uh, I could definitely get one to you.
And, and that's required by ADA for this pool.
And the, the lift itself, is that, uh, is it dependable? Is it, you know, is it something, oh, I guess, I don't know the operations of it, just to Eric or Greg?
Oh, the ADA lift.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, no, can you talk about the, the usage and dependability and, uh, is it, um, to, to use one of those lifts to a pool? How, how able is a, a, a person who, who has struggles to go downstairs, um, to, to use that? How practical is that?
Oh, it's extremely easy. You, uh, you sit down the chair, like I said, it's battery-powered and you hit the button to lower yourself in the water. And when you're going to get out of the water, you hit the button and raise yourself out of water. It's, it's very easy to, to work.
And Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, we'll get a picture of that. And Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, we'll get a picture of that for you.
Do we know what the depth is in that, where they would put that? Is that, is that three feet on one end? I can't remember where it starts. It's been a while.
Yes, in the, yes, in the three-foot area.
Any other questions right now? Eric, Greg, I do have some, uh, speak cards. Um, I have three of them right now. Um, I will read them. And, uh, I have Frank Domlin. If, uh, Frank, whoever wishes to speak, uh, if you could go up to the mic in the back over here at the podium and just state your name and your address, uh, for the record so it can be recorded. Okay?
Mr. Mayor, I can't hear.
Okay, hold on, Jesse.
We have it now.
Better?
Yes.
So I come tonight, uh, when I was child here, where there was three pools, Community Center, Central School in Miami, and we're down to none. And, uh, I, I was on the committee with the, the pool committee, uh, when we started and up for quite a while and, and they worked very hard on, on the, uh, having the aquatic center. It's a hard battle and, uh, for funding like everything. And, uh, so I applaud the city for looking into this and wanting to do something. Um, the municipalities didn't want to go together or, uh, do anything because they were worried about other people using it that wasn't in the city or not, or how, how the funding would be. So it certainly wouldn't be bad if we had both, but I, I think we should go forward and get a pool for the kids to enjoy and, and get it going. And, um, it certainly, uh, on, in the price range, you have the property, you have the facility there and, and, uh, it seems like to me it'd be a, uh, with the engineering done, it would be a good thing to move forward and, and, uh, uh, and get a swimming pool back in the area. And so, uh, I fully support, you know, council and the mayor and everybody looking into it and, and moving it forward and, and further studying it to move, move it on. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. I have Zachary Larson.
Thank you. My name is Zach Larson. Um, I live at 1513 East Birch Street in Globe. Um, just wanted to reiterate Frank's words. I agree with all the things that he said. And my additional comment would be is, um, I've been a resident of Globe for about six years now, coming into the community. And one of the things that was apparent as I, I moved here is the amount of abandoned facilities and buildings of that nature. I think a lot of people are aware of that. And so one of the positives that I see here is there's a, an excellent, um, park there at the community center, one of the nicest parks that we have. Um, but it's a shame that there's another abandoned facility there. So from what I see, um, there's a large benefit in any project that reduces those abandoned facilities and also, um, has a quicker timeline to having a, a full functional recreational location for, for people in this, in this community. Thank you. That was the main comment I wanted to make.
Thank you, Brendan.
Mayor, can I ask a?
Yeah, go ahead. I'm sure.
Mr. Domlin, so you were basically saying that you'd be in favor of just getting this pool fixed and done, right? Versus waiting for an aquatic center? Is that, is that what you were saying? Okay. Thank you.
Next I have Brandon Parker.
Uh, my name's Brandon Parker. I live at 8468 Wesson Drive in Globe. And I don't have much to add to the last two comments, except to underscore that the benefits of the pool are immeasurable and, and not always about dollars. And, uh, there's a lot of tough decisions, but I don't see another viable option. So I would like to just add that it's worth the council's time to look into the, this option.
Thank you, Brendan. And that's all the cards I have, but I have Evelyn. Do you have, you have a card you want, you filled out to, you want to speak?
We, we can catch up afterwards.
Yeah, we can get it after.
We'll get, we'll put one out for you.
You're in trouble. She got a box.
Evelyn Vargas, uh, 783 West Picacho Drive, uh, Miami, Arizona. Uh, good evening, Mayor Gamaros and the Globe City Council. Thank you for allowing me on behalf of the Cobra Valley Regional Aquatic Center, this opportunity to speak. We have an amazing group of people that represent our board. They include Brian Sepala, Vice Chair, Dr. Sherry Dorothy, Superintendent of Miami Public Schools, Jerry Genick, Superintendent of Globe Public Schools, Stanley Gibson, former mayor of Globe and businessman, uh, Joseph Heatherly, citizen, Kathy Melvin, Executive Assistant to Hila County Supervisor Woody Klein, Letha Griffin, Public Relations, Hila Pueblo Community College, Solangele Ava, mom and first things first, Shantae Hunter, mom, NPR specialist at CVRMC. I just want to take a moment to read some of this, uh, some of the information on this stack of surveys. It was an unofficial survey we did at the hospital and a couple of other places. So the survey boxes were left out for a couple of months and just want to read you some of the comments. Please get an aquatic center built. I drive to Stafford to be able to swim. Aquatic centers are an iconic part of childhood, especially in this state. They are also phenomenal tools for allowing older adults to heal and reclaim a youthful feeling. This would be an, a wonderful asset to our community. And some of the reasons they wrote why an aquatic center would be valuable to them is recreational swimming, adult swimming, group exercise, water therapy, events, public health programs, toddler, toddler, uh, playtime, swim team, pool rental, swim lessons, lap swimming. This community would greatly benefit from an aquatic center in too many ways to list. I hope it happens. And this, this list goes on and on. I presented this list to the council a year ago. Uh, but these are, these are just some of the surveys. Let me lay out a quick timeline of where we have been. Two years creating a market analysis, business plan, site analysis, schematic designs, capital plan and community presentations. Three years in the Arizona Legislature, attempting to get three different bills passed to form a district to pay for the operations and maintenance cost of the aquatic center. At this time, we were looking at a pool with a lot of amenities at a cost of about $7 million. After our third attempt at the Arizona Legislature, CVRAC spent about nine months visiting other aquatic facilities, revising the structure of the schematic design, revising the business plan. We made public presentations and revised the operations and maintenance plan. We patterned this next design after the Town of Florence Aquatic Center at a cost of about $5 million. This is the point where we came to Globe City Council, Town of Miami and Hila County to lay out our plan and ask that we, as one united community, support the maintenance and operations of the aquatic center for the betterment of the entire region. With the reality of one pool in Miami limping along and one pool in Globe shut down and in disrepair, the Aquatic Center Committee felt that the Town of Miami, who invests about $70,000 a summer for operations and maintenance, and knowing that the City of Globe was looking at repairing the community center pool at an operations and maintenance cost of about $120,000 per year, the Aquatic Center put forth a proposal to invest the $190,000 combined for the operations and maintenance costs towards a new multi-use pool for the entire population, from the very young to the very old. At this time, there was still a shortfall of about $200,000, which we were hoping could be supported by Hila County. This was the original proposal. After one year of COVID, here we are today. In February, the Aquatic Center was informed that BHP was not going to donate the land for the construction. This was a huge blow, but not a hill to die on. The Aquatic Center Committee began meeting again in March. A committee member brought up an article he had read regarding a new aquatic center being built in Coolidge. Just last week, we had the opportunity to visit the Coolidge Aquatic Center. It is about two weeks away from completion. The funding for the capital to build was obtained through a municipal bond. This aquatic center capital cost is $4.3 million, with an estimated $250,000 in annual operations and maintenance costs, greatly reduced from the original design. It has been constructed in eight months. This information was intended for our aquatic center meeting on Thursday morning, where we would do our due diligence for the people of Globe Miami and surrounding areas. We are at a pivotal point where we can unite and pool the resources together. We can pool our knowledge, our energy and skill together and build one water center that can be enjoyed by all, not just some, but for every citizen that resides in Globe Miami. The City of Coolidge gave this project to the people to decide, and the decision was yes. Since yesterday, many people have called and text, "How can we help? We want to make our community better." Since yesterday, there have been a few other ideas generated on how this can be accomplished. All of us, every one of us in this room are so proud to live in the Globe Miami area. And what makes it so special are the people, are the people that live here, who care about each other. This is common ground. We all recognize and listen to the needs of our community. This is common ground. We have the opportunity if, if we work together instead of apart. Let's commit to work on the common ground. We have one chance for the next 25 years to make a great difference. Maybe it's time we unite and make one amazing place for water recreation. It is so long overdue. And I just want to add, you know, I, I think it's wonderful, you know, I, I echo Frank's comments. Maybe we can accommodate two different water facilities. But if that's not the case, when we look at, at the end of the day, what the community center will be is a rectangle pool without any amenities. People will can, still continue to get in their cars and drive 45 minutes down the road to the nearest aquatic center because that's what children are looking for. That's what young moms with several kids are looking for. Uh, that's what kids that are on swim teams are looking for. That's what elderly, uh, people want a way to get into a pool safely. A lot of elderly people don't want to use a lift. They don't want to get up, give up that small piece of independence. But yet they can't get in a three-step ladder. So, uh, I'm here today on behalf of the aquatic center, but on behalf of this stack of people right here. We received over a thousand surveys. And there's probably two negatives in that whole stat. So maybe it's time to take it to the people and let them decide. Thank you.
Thank you, Evelyn. Do you have any more speaker cards or comments?
I have an email from Mindy Bradley. She says, "Hello, Globe City Council and Mr. Mayor. I have hesitations about funding the repair of the community center pool. This is a short-term solution when we need to be working toward long-term solutions like a regional pool. I understand that people want somewhere to swim. We desperately want the same. But the Miami pool should have taught us that putting money into an unequated facility is essentially paying for a Band-Aid on a festering wound that needs bigger, more complicated care. I know your jobs are fraught with difficulty and balance. I think it's time to put your ability to work through difficult situations, to work on making a regional aquatic center a priority. I know you all want to improve Globe and appreciate all you do to work toward that. I will be attending tonight virtually, but wanted to give you insight from a community member with young children. This can't keep being put off because it's difficult or requires a long-term outlook. Nothing would ever get done if we approached life with that mindset." And she closes, uh, in saying that she's grateful for all you do for the community. I have another one. This email is from Angela Hardy. And Angela says, "Mayor and Council, I am a former vocational rehabilitation counselor for the State of Arizona Department of Economic Security. I worked for 14 years helping people with disabilities live independently and to prepare for and engage in gainful employment. I have a master's degree in rehabilitation counseling from the University of Arizona. Regarding the proposed repairs for the current community center pool, I am opposed to this for several reasons. The main reason is that although it appears that an effort is being made to meet ADA requirements for accommodating people with disabilities, it is a minimal effort with several drawbacks. One, the minimal lifting capacity is 300 pounds. This may not be enough for some people. Two, there is a requirement that the individual with a disability be able to operate the lift from the deck and from the water without assistance. There are people who may not be able to operate the lift due to physical, intellectual or, uh, uh, other disabilities. There are some people who may be afraid of getting on or off the seat, or who may have difficulty getting on or off the seat. The number of people who would be able and or willing to use the lift seems to be very small when taking these factors into consideration. Additionally, there will need to be training for all lifeguards or other personnel at the facility. Then these people will have to train the disabled person, which may be very difficult. Also, it is very likely that the kids would play on the lift, making it wear out more quickly and possibly damaging it. Therefore, I think the. Therefore, I think the money to fix the old pool, which is actually too small for the community and does not provide for babies and young children, and retrofit it with the lift will be a waste of time, effort, and money. A zero-entry pool or sloped-entry pool would, in my opinion, be a better investment. It would allow more people to use the pool without as much difficulty as a lift. It would not expose people with disability to excessive scrutiny from others and would allow people to be more independent. There would be other ADA requirements such as certain rails, walls, et cetera, which would further open the pool to more people and activities. Thank you, Angela Hardy." And I have one more. I did receive a call earlier today from Denise Hansen, and I told her I would let council know that she lives in the Copper Hills area, and I believe is new to the area. And she would like to see council support the Regional Aquatic Center. She says that this would be a community service to Globe as a destination spot, and she would like to see other amenities such as indoor swimming, and so she supports that effort. I do have another. There were two emails from Angela Hardy, but she felt that the one email didn't go through, so she repeated herself, so I'm not going to read the second email.
Yeah, I did talk to her earlier, and she said she had some trouble getting emails through, so...
Yeah, we got all of her comments. Okay, here is a question from Mark and a probably... Ellis? And they lost it. They had a question.
The question was, "Question Concerned for the Pool Rehabilitation: Will this prevent the city from contributing to the O&M for an Aquatic Center?" Thanks in advance, and that's Mr. Ellis.
I do have a message from Debbie Yurkovich. She says, "I agree with Evelyn Vargas. I'd rather see us put all our resources together toward an Aquatic Center. Please raise my taxes."
I do have a request from Chelsea Webb, and she would like for us to call her. She'd like to speak to council.
This is Chelsea.
Hi, Chelsea. This is the Globe City Council, and we're responding to your request to speak.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmember. My name is Chelsea Webb. I live at 790 West Pecacho Drive in Miami. I would just like to also voice my concern and my support for the Aquatic Center. As a mother of four young children, we do currently drive down to the valley and to Stafford to participate in the Aquatic Centers that are offered there. My children were a part of the CCYS swim team before COVID happened and are avid swimmers, and I grew up as an avid swimmer as well. I've been a member of the Globe community for about six years now, and my family and I have enjoyed living in Globe. My husband is from a small town, and I am as well. And I would love to see more accommodations for families come to the town. My concern with rehabilitating this current community center pool is there's just not the space to house a swim team in an appropriate manner there. We saw that issue with the Miami Pool, that there just wasn't enough space. The locker rooms weren't big enough. There wasn't enough deck space for all of the teams to participate, for families to be there and support their swimmers either. And that's my concern with this community center pool, is that we're just putting a Band-Aid on something when we have the opportunities to support this Aquatic Center and bring a true amenity to Globe. Our children in Globe deserve amenities. They deserve to have the ability to grow up and make these memories with their friends at a swimming area. Another concern I have with fixing the Globe community pool is that it's not large enough for our community size. When the Miami Pool was working and functional, they saw that issue a lot, is that when multiple large families or large groups were there at the pool, it often became overcrowded and very unsafe very quickly. The amount of lifeguards that were able to be there to support the pool was just not sufficient for mothers with young children, or even elderly community members who are wanting to go for exercise. And so I would just like to also back what Evelyn says, and back the Aquatic Center and truly give Globe a chance to survive and thrive in the future, not just put a Band-Aid on something, but actually put some money into revitalizing our community. Show our children and show the future of Globe that we really do care about keeping Globe a close community for everyone to be here, for everyone to participate in community events together, and to be able to participate as a family. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is that everybody? Any other ones? Shelley?
And Mr. Mayor, Members Council, if you don't mind, just a couple of closing comments here. This is Eric sent this. It's an example of the type of lift that we're looking at. Eric, are you there? Did you want to comment at all about this?
Yeah, I mean, that photo, I mean, there's a handful of different ones, and during the design phase of the rehabilitation, there'll be different options to choose from, but most pools you see with a lift, that's kind of what you're looking at.
And Eric, just one other question. I mean, you know, you're a firm company that rehabs concrete. You have professional pool people here. Is this a Band-Aid, or is this a professional rehab of a facility that is existing?
Yeah, this is a long-term repair, not a Band-Aid. I mean, our whole business revolves around fixing existing infrastructure. So this, you know, this is the same thing, whether a building, a pool, we're going to fix it, it's going to be, it's going to be a long-term fix. It's not a Band-Aid.
Mr. Mayor, Members Council, I think it's wrong to consider this a zero-sum decision that you'll take when the budget comes up. I mean, I've been involved since past five years on the Aquatic Center. I've helped move the bill and try to get the bill passed at the legislature. I wholly support an Aquatic Center here for the residents of Globe and the residents of the region. But I also know, and in talking to people, that the City of Globe misses their community pool. It was closed. It was closed under, you know, a study that was a visual study. Everybody I talked to talks about the time when they walked across the hill to get to the pool, that they spent time there. I don't see how this city can move forward with the new things and the advancements without fixing that hole in the heart of Globe that this pool, the lack of this pool being up and running provides. It's memories, it's historic, it's everyone's childhood that's lived here, and I think there's more children that can have that memory of going to this pool and going to the park and playing ball, doing all those things at that park. It's part of the whole uplift of this park area. To improve that park without improving that pool would be a mistake. But that doesn't mean that this strikes an Aquatic Center off the list of priorities for the City of Globe. You know, there's time to find the money for operational funds for an Aquatic Center. There's efforts that we can partner in to help move that forward. It's a long haul, it's a heavy list, I'm fully understanding what it takes to get an Aquatic Center, and you're going to need to find land, you're going to need to find capital to build it, and you're going to need to find operational money. And but when the time comes, when that pool, when that Aquatic Center, which is a different type of facility, yeah, we just, Globe's community pool is a big square, but it's still, it's what we know, and I think we can have them both. I don't see that this in any way inhibits our ability to support a future Aquatic Center, and so I just wanted to share my thoughts.
Thank you. Also, I want to open it up to any of the council members, have any more comments or any questions for any of the presenters? If you do, we'll take that time just to at least, the open mic, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I've been involved with this project for quite some time on the outside, more so than on the inside. I had several conversations with Evelyn, and I know how passionate she is about this. I've even told her I could support her with it. But since those discussions, a lot of things have happened in the, what, five or six years we've been working on it, Evelyn? Yeah. Okay. So, you know, I really was concerned when, the last time you were here, you said that the mines had decided not to donate the land in between both Globe and Miami, and that was one of my first picks when we were thinking about this kind of stuff, and I was really pleased that the mines were going to come across with that. Of course, things change, and so now we don't, there's no land. I could agree with Paul on, you know, there is a possibility of Aquatic Center one day, but there's also the possibility of having a city pool. Now, in Utah, up in St. George, where my son lives and lived for last 17 years, they have an Aquatic Center, they have several Aquatic Centers in St. George, but they also have community pools. And my grandkids, that's where we went. They love going to the community pool, so it's not an impossibility, okay? I just think, you know, we're looking at this, I think it's a possible, a possibility, depends on money. We're having those discussions, we're not going to make a decision tonight, but, you know, I could go either way, and right now, this looks like the most, what's the term I'm looking for, most doable project at this time for this community. You know, so I could still support the Aquatic Center, but right now, I think the pool is what we need. I know a lot of people go to it. Personally, I don't, but that's just my opinion. I think it could work both ways, if we all worked on it together.
Thank you, Mike. What else?
Thank you, Mayor.
Go ahead, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor, through you. I was on the council when we shut that pool down, and that was probably one of the hardest decisions when I, it was right after I got elected, so I kind of got thrown into it. And Chris, you remember that too. You and I worked together on that. And at that time, yes, it did have to be closed, because what we were told, it was losing 10,000 to 12,000 gallons of water a day, I recall. And I don't regret my decision at all because of the safety of the kids. I know we worked with you guys on the swim team for the kids and all that, and it was a tough decision, if you recall that, back then. But I too support both projects. I think it would be fantastic to redo the community center pool. Where I grew up in a small town in Indiana, it's exactly like Globe was. It was the Knights of Columbus. All the kids hung out at the community pool, and I'm sure if we have both, they'll do the same at both pools. But for short term, I think this would be the quick fix, and if I understand right, we could get this done for next season, correct?
Yes, if we are able to fund this, this budget cycle, we're looking about a September start date, about six and a half months, and so we're talking like a May 1 opening of 2020.
Not that I don't support you, Evelyn, at all, I do, and I hope you know that. I'd like to see this, because I know, like we said, we could get this done for next season, and then concentrate on this center.
Thank you, Mike. Freddie?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I want to echo some of my colleagues' comments. You know, I was not on council when the pool, the community pool got shut down, but I definitely was in the know, and I read articles, and I felt I had the pulse of the community in my mind, because there was a lot of pushback for that. And, you know, it was unfortunate, the pool got to a point where it had to be shut down for safety reasons, but I do remember the difficult times that the city had with the residents of this community for shutting it down. So that said, you know, when you have an opportunity to possibly bring it back, and I agree, you know, 25-year fix is not a Band-Aid. That's a generation, maybe two, or close to. So I don't consider that as a Band-Aid. You know, the other thing is, our community center is a pillar in this community. And in addition to what we already have there, bringing this community pool back to life would just increase the value of the pillar that we have. You know, it's nestled right next to Besch. You know, we have the ball fields, the soccer fields. I mean, it truly is a community center in every facet of the word. You know, I agree with Mr. Domlin, he witnessed it. You know, we had more than one recreation center here, and so not only can it be done, it was done. And so I do believe that this community in this region can support more than one pool. I applaud Evelyn and her team with the extraordinary work that they've done to try and bring this Aquatic Center to life. I followed their path through the state legislature and the hardships that followed thereafter. And I really just applaud that team, the Aquatic Center's team's drive to continue to get this thing through and push it through, and I really believe that it will happen. We just are going to have to find ways to get there. I believe also that, you know, we can survive, and we can support regionally an Aquatic Center, but we have an opportunity to support our community. Then this council, you know, it's our obligation to do that. It is our obligation to the community to bring back to life a pool if it's within our means. And so I think this is why we're having, you know, this discussion just didn't start. We've been discussing this for at least three years, around there. So, you know, it's come to this point where we've established it, you know, is this feasible? We have professionals that can not create a Band-Aid fix, but generational fix. And so, again, it's our obligation to really consider that at its fullest. Again, the community center is a pillar. This will just help us bring that community center back to a time and a place that everybody can enjoy and feel good about on a Sunday or Saturday afternoon with grandkids like mine. So I think it can be done. You know, I still support the Aquatic Center, and again, I think this council has an obligation to take an opportunity, if it's there, and bring it to life. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Freddie.
I see the desire to get the pool done, because we want to have something done and available. I get that. But honestly, we scrimp and save and fight to do anything in this town, because we just don't have a lot of resources. And a million dollars to us is a lot of money. Maybe not to Tempe or Phoenix, but to us, that's a lot of money. And let's be honest, if we put a million dollars into that pool, and three years from now, they want, they got enough funding to move forward with a regional pool, you're not going to pony up another million dollars and then try to spend more money... and then try to spend more money to house, to, to man that pool. Let's, let's just be straight with everybody. So I don't see that we can do both. I would like to do both. I just don't think it's realistic. And I feel like COVID put a hamper on things for us, and it was just recently that the land that was kind of put out in front of us, that it was a great option, has been taken away. So I feel like we ought to give it at least some fighting chance and look into what is the possibility of getting funding for the regional aquatic center and see, give it an honest chance. Because what we've been doing, waiting for the legislature, they're more worried about not having their name on a bill that taxes somebody. They want to get re-elected. They don't want to be, their name on, oh, he voted to raise taxes. That's what's happened to us. It's not whether or not the pool is viable. No one wants to take credit for raising taxes. And so I think if we seriously said, okay, if we're willing to put up a million dollars to, to fix a pool, yes, make it last, but it's not fancy. It has no, no diving boards, it has no kiddie pool, it has nothing other than a nice place to swim, safe, where the aquatic center offers amenities. And I think there are partners out there, and I'm on the hospital board, and I know that we've talked about pledging some significant amount of money towards it. So I think if we were to grab all the people, or all the companies that are willing to support it, and put them in a room and say, what can you, what will you do? And then look at it again, I think that I would at least like to see us try. And if it's not viable, then fix the pool. But I don't see us funding both, and I don't think it's honest to say that we would.
Thank you, Mayor.
Jesse, you have any comments or questions?
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing, I guess I just want to reiterate that I, I believe that fixing the community center is something that this council really needs to look at, and I'm in full favor of doing something like that. Most of the boards that I serve on are for the local youth in this community. They need something now. We talk about economic, moving, moving that forward and growing our economy here in Globe. And in doing such, I think we kind of forget that we need the kids to stay, we need the youth to stay in order for Globe to keep going. The play equipment we use is the same play equipment that I played on when I was younger. So I think this is a wise investment for this, for us here, is to move forward with this. I, I full-heartedly agree that an aquatic center is amazing. It's an amenity that Globe needs. But if we can't fund it now, well, then we need to look for other funding for the future for that, while fixing this right now, so the youth of our community has a safe, appropriate place to go. So, in talking about what councilmanship we had said, and not being able to fund that, I, I don't see that happening. If the funds are there, I don't see why this council or the next council after us wouldn't want to help fund that. I think that it's important to have options. It's important for us to reinvest in the youth of this community. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. I have a few comments, but I'd have a question for Eric. The cost of the increase from our last amount, is that because of material in, in that timeframe?
Yes. Yeah, still, a lot of it's in the stainless steel of the gutter systems.
Okay, so it's increase in material, and that's why the cost has gone up, and it'll continue to go up apparently year by year, I would think.
Yep.
Yeah, this is Greg Simmons. I mean, if you just look at lumber, lumber's gone up one hundred and thirty-nine percent since COVID.
Thank you. I guess my comments are, I know we have a difficult decision to make, whether we do. I, I believe, and I, and I agree with Frank with the both options, and I agree with Fernando, at this time, we probably can't afford both, but can we three years, five years down the road? You know, I, I don't want to comment on Miami's issues pools, that, that wasn't, I don't know anything to really comment as to why it hasn't been sustainable. I was part of the legislature, I know all the work that the board has done, Evelyn has done to get to, to this point. I went down there and, as a witness down there also, but like Fernando said, it's never going to pass in the legislature. The big companies, the, the, are not going to want permanent taxation, so it's not going to work. My concern is that we still don't have an established process on building or capital. We don't have a, a, a process on sustainability for an aquatic center. And this gives us an opportunity to get something right away, or at least for next summer, for the kids to do. We need that recreation for our kids. Especially with the closure of the Old Dominion Mine Park. We're looking at other options, I think Paul mentioned a little bit. It's not only just the pool, that's just one portion of it, but there's a lot of things going on for upgrades within the, within the city to try and upgrade many facilities, and, and this is just one piece of it. So we got to look at the whole picture. This council has worked very hard, starting with, with economic development and tourism for the last four years. And I think in the future, we're going to see that return. You know, maybe we don't see the big lights and everything right now, but there's a lot of work being done in, in the, underneath the, to, to set the, the foundation for everything there is, and, and we're, even through COVID, what was our percentage that we saw? We were, we were anticipating a thirty-three percent decrease in sales tax last year because of COVID. We ended up with a twelve percent increase. Pretty amazing to, to, through COVID, to see that increase. So where's that going to balance out in the future? You know, when I worked for the fire department, we were cutting one percent in every department, two percent every year. We didn't see those increases. We are seeing them, and I think we will see them in the future. But the foundation needs to be set. When we talk, when we talk about Coolidge, and we talk about Florence, we're not a Florence, we're not a Coolidge. We're talking about population of Florence four times Globe. We're talking about Coolidge twice our population, and they are growing. They're building twenty, thirty homes a day, a month in their area. So is Florence. So their, their budgets are in the forty, fifty million dollar range, we're in the twenty-six million. Will we get to that point? I think we will in the future. If we continue to work on our, our community economic development, on tourism, we're going to get there. You know, I talked to Florence, and I talked to Coolidge, and I know they, they passed their bond for four point three percent. But it wasn't unanimous, it wasn't overwhelming. I think, I don't know if it was a fifty-one, fifty, or what the percentage was, that they won that bond, but they had to throw in to fix a road entry that the, the people would agree on. That was the key. They had, if they would fix the road, then they'd vote on the aquatic center. And this is from their finance and their mayor I met with. Florence has a tax rate of two percent. They also have a four percent construction tax rate. They have a bed tax of two percent. They have a food tax of two percent. So there's tax on tax on tax on tax. So we need to consider, we're at two point three percent taxes in our, in the city. Coolidge is at three percent. These are all things we as a council need to take into consideration. I, you know, I, I think it's affordable. I know one million dollars is a lot of money, but I don't think that's one million dollars that's going to be spent from our residents. I think we go after stakeholders and investors, and we, we will get funding for that pool, and it won't be a full million to the city residents of Globe. So a fix, we need, we need an aquatic center. I have grandkids that swam at the, at the Florence Aquatic Center, at the Anthem one, the Community Center, amazing. And I have a grandkid that swam for the Piranhas here in Globe. Was there any different of an experience? No. It was, they, he, they, he enjoyed it. It was a camaraderie, the, the, you know, I don't care, we had a pool in Miami. But we still got the program, we still did it, and they competed with everybody else. So this is a tough decision that we're going to have to make, but I think in the future, I think we can support both. We gotta, we have to provide some kind of recreation for our kids. Now, especially coming out of COVID, in the future, I think our community can afford both, an aquatic center also.
Mr. Mayor, Members Council, we have one additional communication on the, the bat phone here.
Mr. Mayor, this text is from Carolyn Larson, who lives at fifteen thirteen East Birch. And she said she sent an email to her council member today, but wanted to make sure that her voice was heard as well. She states, "I don't want any more abandoned buildings. I don't want my taxes raised. I want the community pool rehabbed." I agree with what Frank, Zach, and Brandon have said. That was Carolyn Larson.
And, Mr. Mayor, Members Council, before we end, just to, I wanted to clarify one point. Evelyn, we, prior when we talked about the aquatic center, we talked about putting a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars into, contributing to operational maintenance. How soon would you need that? What, when do you expect to be done? You, you would be needing that type of money, the built construction rate open, how many years? But, I mean, but if, if we're planning, we're doing long-range planning, doing five-year planning, when would you want us to be able to, to, to do the hundred and twenty thousand? Do you want to jump up the microphone? I'm sorry.
You know, since all of this broke, I guess, there had been people calling me with different options, and, you know, I don't want to put them out there, but, you know, a couple, a couple of people had some very good options in maintenance and operations. You know, there's, there's two things that we're looking at, of course, is the capital to build, and we do have an extensive capital plan which outlines how we're going to raise the money to build the aquatic center. The other part is, of course, maintenance and operations. And all these years, we have gone after maintenance and operations first, because we realize that we need to sustain that pool for the life. You know, we can't, there have been communities that build the pool, and then they try to figure out how we're going to pay for this, you know? So we don't, we don't want to do it that way. We want to make sure that we have M and O secure, and we can support that pool for the life. And so with some of these other options, we're going to look at them on Thursday. You know, Thursday, we have a meeting. We just kind of had to put out some of the information that not even our Aquatic Center Committee has seen. You know, Florence, or Coolidge did build their pool with a bond, and it passed fifty-one to fifty percent, like Mayor Gamaro said, very close. When I was visiting last week with them, they, they had a community team that really pushed the initiative. And they were saying that after people that were negative against it saw the, the aquatic center going up, once the slide went up, everyone got excited. Even the ones that voted no were, were for this and saw the value in it. So I haven't answered your question, Paul, but can you ask it again?
So if we're, I'm, I'm, if, the, the question is, can we do both? The question on the table is, you know, can we do both? We had talked about the city coming up with a, a promise of a hundred and twenty thousand to, to put towards operating expenses of an independent regional aquatic center. In what budget year would you need that money, that we would have to allocate that money? Because we, we probably couldn't do it this year, probably couldn't do it next year, but, but third year, fourth, fourth year, a hundred and twenty thousand, we can plan ahead. I, I'm just asking you, when would you need that money? What, what budget cycle?
I would say, I would say at least three years out, at least three years out. And I say that because I wanted this done before I'm sixty-five.
Okay. Well, that's fair. Thank you. And, and so it, yeah, the, and Mr. Mayor, Members Council, is, is, Mayor, as you said, you know, we're, we're, we're looking for partners on this to get this done, so we can get it done soon. But, but the commitment of, of three to five years from now, that, that we come up with, we could find a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty thousand for, to partner in an aquatic center, I, I think is something that is, that is doable. It'd be tough, but, but it's not insurmountable. If that's council's priorities, you know, I, I, I can't, I can't look into the mirror and tell you exactly how that would be done, but I, but I don't think that that's insurmountable, I guess what I'm trying to say. And, and Mr. Mayor, Members Council, the, this is a presentation, the only direction that we were asking for, Council, staff would like to go forward and, and submit a grant request with resolution for possible partnership in, in funding some money for this project.
With which mine, I'm sorry?
For a resolution?
No.
I'm sorry, wrong one.
Freeport.
Freeport. Oops. I can't read my own writing. So Freeport.
You just blew it, Paul.
Uh-oh. I, Robin, I'm so sorry.
Where's that flag at?
Yeah. You want to go?
Text in the mail.
Yeah. Okay, Freeport.
My, okay.
Mayor, Council, I have a couple of things that I want to add. I echo the sentiment that the other men in the room who have, based on their citizenship, think that this is a great plan. I'm not here as a representative CCYS, but I've been on the CCYS board for six-plus years now. And also the, one of the Piranha women is here, and she doesn't want to speak either. But we have, since I've been on the board with the CCYS, we have not had a year that wasn't in turmoil with the Piranhas. We're talking about a program of seventy-plus kids cutting it off because they're full and they can't accept anymore, and never having a facility for those kids. A sure facility, every year, it's in February, they're doing their sign-ups, and they're coming to the board saying, we don't know if we have a facility. Should we go on with our registration? Should we tell them that there's going to be a program? And to me, as a board member with CCYS, seeing that same problem over and over comes to a point where it's like, why isn't this a priority? Yes, it's only seventy-something kids, but if it, there's that need for a sport, as a community member myself, I moved here in two thousand and six, I feel, and my kids aren't on the swim team, but I feel like that is something that needs to be at the forefront of a community need. There are kids from both communities that swim in the Miami pool every year. And not, and Miami has done a great job of hobbling along their pool every year and raising money and getting people to donate to be able to provide that facility after Globe's pool was closed. So I fully support getting the pool open now, getting the kids somewhere to swim, and in the long term, helping to bring the aquatic center and an Olympic-sized pool, and the things that look great, but at a fiscally responsible level, getting this open now and getting our kids somewhere to swim.
Thank you. Any comments or any, we're good? Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for your comments, Evelyn, everybody on the phone, on email, thank you.
Next, we'll go to, Mr. Mayor, Members Council, before we go on, we have Rachel from, our vendor on the, on the phone, or on the Zoom, and she's got a, a time limit. Would, would you be, if, we want to have her available when we do the, the healthcare presentation, we, could we move that eight?
Move it up?
Move it up. It'd be eight F. Are you okay with that, or do you want to?
I'm okay with that, as long as Rich, you're okay with bumping you a little bit, or with the Conny's Bridge update?
Jury's got a long.
Are we okay?
Mr. Mayor, before we go on with the Blue Cross Blue Shield presentation, I have a community call that I missed two meetings, and I would like to first apologize to Mr. Tom Walsh and ask the mayor and council if I could read that real fast before we move on.
And that was from previous meeting, or?
Yes.
Yeah, we missed that one. Our apologies to Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is from Tom Walsh, and he sent this on Tuesday, April the sixth, and wanted me to read it at the April thirteenth meeting, and I missed it, and I, apologies to Tom Walsh. He states, "Last Friday, a Rad sanitation truck spilled five-plus quarts of oil in the street in front of my house on Collins. I attempted to contact Rad and the City of Globe, but, uh, but the Rad website had either Mesa or Tucson contact information and a complaint form. When I contacted the city, at least three contact numbers were incorrect for different departments. Eventually, I was able to reach a person from Water who was very supportive and took my information. Just after my phone call to the city, I received a return call from Brandon Gillum, who sent Steve Roberts out with the proper material to soak up the oil. Eventually, Rad did show up, but it was three hours after my first call. While, while oil spills are common on, common on Collins Street was just resurfaced just last year, and the oil spill was actually a puddle close to five feet long. Without the quick action of Brandon and Steve, I would have even had a bigger mess and most likely a pothole in front of my home. A big thank you to the city and its staff, who go the extra mile in customer support."
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, yeah. So, thank you very much, that's the Public Works Fleet, Brandon and Steve. Very helpful.
Let them know that, too, if they can get a copy of that, or?
Okay. And, um, so, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, do, or, Mr. Mayor, do you want to read the intro for eight F?
Seven F?
Seven F, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're going to bump to seven F. And it's, uh, "Council will consider and possibly approve the group health plan renewal with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Arizona for fiscal year 2021, 2022, which reflects a 0% increase in healthcare benefits and the addition of a high deductible health plan, health savings account option. Consider and possibly approve the employee contribution rate Schedule II and authorize the city manager's signature on the renewal documents once they are available."
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, um, let's see, if you want to go to the, the first slide? Thank you. So, um, just overview, uh, City of Globe, um, offers Blue Cross Blue Shield of Arizona Healthcare Plans, HMO and PPO. Okay, and I'm not going to go into big long on the difference, HMO, PPO. Everybody here has one or the other. Our benefits include dental, vision, life, um, uh, AD and D, death and dismemberment, dependent care options, uh, we provide that, high deductible. Now, the, the new stuff, the overview that we want to talk about, is that we are adding a high deductible plan. This is not instead of, but in addition to. We're going to talk a lot about that. Also, we're going to be talking about an HSA savings account, which is, members of the, uh, employees have their personal HSA, where we pull tax-free money before it's, uh, salary, before it's taxed, and, and put that in an account that they can spend on just healthcare costs. And, um, a program where the city will contribute and match, um, additional funds in an, uh, health savings account. Do I have a quicker? Okay. So, um, just to, to go through, I'm going to go through the, the three different types of insurance. Education's so important, all this. Right now, um, we offer, uh, HMO for a single, HMO for a single plus one, and HMO for a family. Right now, uh, you can see the amounts that, that each pay. This is a per 24 pay cycles. There's, um, 52 weeks, 50, um, uh, weeks that we, we, uh, there's, it's complicated anyway, there are 24 pays in a year. And so, for, um, uh, for HMO, which is, we'll see is a very, uh, zero deductible, um, singles pay 51, 65, uh, a single plus one pays 205, uh, every two weeks, and HMO family, um, $328.94 every pay period. The percentage of contribution is a, is a real important point, and this is, how much does the city pay and how much does the employee pay? And, and this is for, um, uh, how we, uh, these changes in our, our, we're very sensitive in our budget and our payroll and our salary. We're, we have $8 million in, in, um, salary and benefits and a retirement that, that we spend, and so these are, these are very important. Right now, for HMO, uh, if you're single, um, you're paying 11.3%. If you're single plus one, you're paying 22.5% of your healthcare costs, and HMO family, you're paying 25.7%. All right, so, next slide. And, now, um, the PPO, which is, uh, basically, it has a, um, a deductible 500 and, I think, 1,000, I have a chart deeper in that, that shows the deductibles. You pay more out of pocket, but you pay less as part of your contribution. And this is not the current, this is what we're, we're considering right now, um, but I'll have a comparison deeper into the slide as to, um, uh, what, what we're, we're offering or what we're, um, requesting. And, and again, the, the purpose of this presentation is for council to decide those, uh, contribution costs. So, um, a PPO single, we're looking to, um, to bring this up to $29.72 per pay. It, we had it down in the, uh, in about $6 range, but we wanted to have a, a, a very low cost to the individual, but since we're bringing on the high deductible plan, we will still have a low cost to the individual plan. Um, and that would be still, they're paying only 7% of their costs. A single plus one, the employee would be paying 11% of that cost, and of that, um, the PPO family of the 28,000, of the total cost of the insurance, the employee would pay 170 a cycle, I'm sorry, uh, per pay, and 14%. Go to the next one. Now, this is, this is the additional plan, all right? And this is the one that I, that came out of, um, the request out of our, our focus groups with, uh, people who work for the city. The idea was that no matter who you are, what you're doing, when, when every paycheck you pull between 50 and $325 out of your paycheck, it, it, it goes to reduce your, your take-home pay. All right? That, that money is, is going into your healthcare and lowering your deductible, but, um, we're looking at a high deductible to give another option, and that option is, um, going to be explained further on. It, it's a matter of you paying less upfront with your employer and then banking that into an HSA account and covering those costs. Just let me go through the numbers here. Again, this is, we're talking about if you're single, um, each, each pay period, we'd pull a dollar 68 out, um, we, which is 0.5% of the cost. Single plus one, $6.72. High deductible family, uh, $9.40 per pay. And then there'd also be, I think, about, uh, $2.40 per month for, $2.40 a month for an HSA account that we recommend goes with this. We're also allocating, uh, 1,000 per year for a single, 1,500, single plus, 2,000 for a family. This would come in the form of, uh, if, if someone switches to this, you, you have a high deductible, you're going to need money right off the bat. We recommend that, that anyone taking this plan, get an HSA account, and then we will immediately seed $500 into that HSA account to help you cover your costs, and, um, uh, from there, we would match one-on-one to, uh, to, to the maximum, uh, contributions here. So, next slide. Now, the plan coverage, and this is, this is the, the difficulties here. Uh, deductible, uh, if you're doing HMO, which is a, a nice plan and very, and, and you, you pay a good portion of your salary for that, um, uh, for you, you go to the doctor, there's zero deductible for you or members of your family. PPO, you, the first $500 you pay, until then you would hit the 20% and 1,000 family. And then, for this new high deductible plan, you're talking $4,000, uh, that you pay out of pocket or with your HSA, and 8,000 total with family before you hit, uh, you get into the, the 80/20 match. The, it is important to know that these are all in, in-network, out-of-network is, is crazy, and we'll, I didn't want to go into that much detail here, but, but this is the, the important piece, is that, that 4,000 for a single person, 8,000 for family, um, the deductible, that's a lot, okay? And, and we, we've had this discussion, this all came out of the, the Mayor's Healthcare Benefits Task Force, and we've had these discussions already. I'll go to the next slide. In order to help manage that high deductible plan, we're, um, we're offering employees an HSA account, health savings account. Your personal, you, you, um, your personal pre-tax healthcare debit card, you have to apply, just like you would with a regular credit card, you go through us, but, but it'd be your card that you carry with you, that, that is your property, it's not, it's not through us. Um, we, it would be funded from either deductions from, that you allocate as an employee or that we contribute as a, uh, seeding money, the 500, or as a match, okay? And this comes out before taxes. And so, while you're, you're getting, uh, and I think I figured this out one time, if, if, if you, if you put 50, $50 into an HSA account, it's equal to about $37 spending capacity, um, if, if you would go to, to the, the drugstore to buy medicine. And so, you're, you're getting it pre-tax there, and, and it gets complicated, and talk to your tax advisor, but, but getting that pre-tax gives you more punch for your money. It may be used on any health-related costs from insurance deductibles to NICO. Whatever, whatever qualifies, there's a long list of what qualifies, but it's for healthcare needs. We mainly want to see that put in, in there for those deductibles, it is a high deductible plan, and so you want to have that money there. Annual maximum, uh, contribution, uh, for a single, you can put up to $3,600 into the plan. For a family, up to $7,200 in a plan per, and, per year. And so, you put, you put the, your family, you put 7,000 in there, and you don't spend it all, you put another 7,000, you can keep growing that, that pot in your personal HSA account. Unspent funds rollover to next year. This is the most important piece. If you don't spend it, you keep it. There are FSA accounts, won't go to detail, but the FSA accounts, you, you allocate it, but you got to spend it that year. This is a rollover account, and it's, and it, and just to be clear, they only allow an HSA account with a high deductible plan. Okay? Yeah, so it must be, must be enrolled in an HD plan, uh, and transferable in the way of, it, it travels with you. So, if you were to leave the City of Globe for some reason and go work for somewhere else, and they, uh, you could still use that money in spending on medical costs on your new employer, if you were to retire and you still have money in that account, you could spend that for, for healthcare costs. So, it's, it's your money, once we pay it to you, you get to keep it. Okay? Next slide. So, high, um, high deductible strategies, pros and cons. In a nutshell, um, you can keep more of your paycheck, but you must be ready to pay more out of pocket. Okay? The strategy, take the money you would have deducted from your check and put that money into your HSA account with the city match. So, I got some examples. This is one scenario, uh, the, the PPO family. Let's say that if, if you were to go from PPO family to HD family, um, you would save $4,800, um, so, $4,080, which is 170 times 24 pays. Okay? You can invest that $4,080 along with the, uh, eventual $200, or $2,000 match, that would bank you $6,080 in your HSA account. Now, remember, it's, it's 4,000 deductible on individual, 8,000 total. So, so, let's say that worst-case scenario, you, you had enough illness and, and trips to the doctor and emergency room, and, and combine things that, that you went to, um, you, you needed to, you spent that $8,000, so you'd be out of pocket $2,000. But, but the best-case scenario, maybe you didn't spend all of your HSA, you were able to use it, and, and you could roll over that 2,000 to the next year. That first year is really, really tricky. It's the year that you want to, you want to hope you have a good, clean year, um, everybody's safe, everybody's healthy, um, but you control your dollars. A benefit from a healthy year. It, this, definitely, this is something for people who are healthier, younger people, people don't have the, all the aches and pains and things as, as I do, and, and we, we see doctors commonly, but it's, it's for, everybody needs to decide, we'll talk about education, because this is a personal choice that every employee needs to make based on how they, how they, how they plan their lives. And Mayor, we've had this conversation, I know there's, this is a, this is a really important piece of the puzzle. But, but the idea is, if you, if you go to HD plan, the, the high deductible plan, you invest in the, the HSA and, and you can cover those costs. If you have a good year, you can roll some money over. If not, you're about the same place, but, um, but if you have a bad year, you know, you're going to come a little out of pocket. Next slide, the 66. Now, the, I wanted to bring up the, what we, we had before in the, in what we call the 66-33 rule. One of the most important benefits an employee can offer, uh, employer can offer is to share the cost of that dependent coverage. City Globe cares about their employees. City Globe has been very generous to their employees, and, and as you saw on the earlier slides, we pick up, um, more so than the 33%. Uh, I think the highest percent that we, the, the lowest percent that we pick up, um, on an HMO family, um, the employee picks up the 25%, that's not even close to 33%. This year, we are adding a plan that is a 99% city, 1% employee split, um, but it's, because it's a high deductible plan, we're not, the city isn't paying more so than the other two plans. It's not more expensive. The savings in the plan is passed on to the employee, and this is for those employees who are young, healthy, and want to try to keep as much in their, their pocket as possible, as long as they, they, they balance this right. But council has always talked about a, a desire to reach that, go back to that 66-33 split, uh, with HMO and PPO. And so, because of that, um, we looked at what it would take to get the PPO to, um, so, okay, so this is the HMO. The HMO is as close as we've come, the, the highest is 70, is, uh, 75, 25, not so much, 22 with a single plus one, and 11 for the single. And go to the next slide, oh, I went faster than you. So, this is the HMO, and you can see we're at 25, 75, not quite the 66-33. We looked at, this slide I was looking for, a match to do, um, what if we took PPO and equalized it with HMO and took the same amount, had the employees take the same amount as, as they did in HMO? Okay, so, so, where it was, was at, well, let's, uh, $6.37, that's 1.5. If we took it up to what the HMO was being pulled out, that would grow to $47 for paycheck. That's a 9.8% increase, an increase of $41 over the, um, what they were paying before. Single plus one, PPO, if we matched it to HMO from $76 all the way up to per pay to $191 per pay, that would be the employee spending 22%. That'd be a 13% increase in a, a dollar amount of $114 a year, I'm sorry, a, a paycheck, that would go up. And, and then with PPO to HMO match for family, 152, uh, is what we were, we'd go 12%. That was prior, make, take that to 25, and we're up to $300, $305 a paycheck, um, a 12% increase, a $153 increase. We, this is a bridge too far. Council, just so we know, this is not what we're proposing, this is where it would be, but this is, no one, I think, believes that we can make this kind of change, uh, today and, and match these up. But, um, but I wanted to show what that would look like. So, what we're proposing, this is the PPO proposed, and, and I, in, in a couple conversations, we, we actually moved this down a little bit. So, this is what staff is, is recommending now into, uh, and it's a little bit different than, than what we had the last time we met. So, a PPO single, it was $6.37, and again, we were trying to have that, that bare bones, we were subsidizing this PPO, uh, before we had the H, HD plan. We went from 1.5 to a 5.5, and so, that would go from $6 to, um, that is not the right slide. Those are not that, those numbers are wrong. Okay, so, let me, let me go to, let me go to the, the next slide. And I can show the same thing here. Okay? There, these are the right numbers. Okay? This is what we're... This is what we're going to, which is a twenty-nine dollars, ninety-three dollars, and you can't see this, but I'm highlighting my screen, but the, do you have a pointer? Or the, in the middle, the middle column, the blue, right, the dark, bold right there, that one. Okay? So that would be what we're increasing them to. So it's going from six to twenty-nine dollars. It's going up, and I can look at mine and tell you, it's going up from seventy-six to the ninety-three and it's going up from one fifty-two to one seventy. So we're talking about a two percent increase on single plus one, a one point five percent increase on family. And per paycheck, we're about sixteen and eighteen dollars for a single and for family on there. So, so that addition is under twenty dollars per paycheck for PPO. And so it is a slight increase and very close to what we had. Does that match, Mayor, what you have in front of you?
It's close, yes.
Okay.
Mayor, I've got a question.
Sure.
So, last year when we talked about the benefit structure, we talked about making the HMO only available to those employees who already had it. You did not mention that this time. So are we making that available or are we still doing the moratorium that if you're not already on the HMO plan, you can't get the HMO plan?
No, we're, we're okay. Right now, I, I don't think there's a lot of benefit to that. I think that giving more choices rather than less is kind of the avenue we're going. And so I don't think we're going to, we had, I do remember talking about that, but we have no intention to restrict the, the people from doing the HMO. There are people who, who enjoy that plan and even though it's, it's, has the highest cost, you may get somebody who wants to come in and may want to do that plan. So we're not talking about restricting that.
Okay.
Okay? So, so we're looking at a mayor and council for the PPO, single plus one and PPO family. Single plus one, we're talking about a two percent increase, which would be about seventeen dollars per paycheck. And for family, a one point five percent increase, about sixteen dollars per paycheck.
Seventeen, yeah.
And I, I, my apologies, but I have so many numbers in my head, I goofed that up.
And that's pre-tax too, so it'll be less than that. You'll, you'll show.
No.
It's not pre-tax?
Is it pre-tax?
Yes, it is.
Okay, it is.
So it'll be less than what you're actually seeing those deductions.
Okay. Shelley says yes, so she, right.
Is it for the, wait, excuse me, pre-tax for the HSA contribution, not for our part of the payment for the healthcare, right?
Units are taking out pre-tax.
Really? Okay.
Yeah.
Long as we're not going to jail, I don't.
So, now, and if you could go back to that one slide, the previous slide, can you back one? Shelley only goes forward. Okay, there you go. The, there, and ignore the, the wrong numbers in black, but we're, we're looking at the, we're increasing it five point five per single, two percent for single plus one, one point five. What, what we, we did talk about and what I would like to ask is while we're doing a very slight increase, is we'd like to look at the, down below, that the, the single, the single plus one, that we, we keep ratcheting up very smally, small, two percent a year for the next five years in order to kind of reach that point where we have closer to HMO and the, and the, and the balance in what we pick up for one and pick up for the other. And then for family, a little less, one point five a year for the next five years. And, and at least it's a, it's a incremental increase, but people will know it's coming, will, and just that commitment from council that over those next five years, we, we try to remove that balance, get it closer to the sixty-six, thirty-three goal. I don't think we'll get there. I've run the numbers, it won't get us to sixty-six, thirty-three. It gets us about twenty, twenty-two percent. But, but at least I think, Mayor, you asked for clarity and the people know what's coming.
You bet, yeah.
So, so that's the, that's our commitment from there. And then the, and so.
Mayor.
Go back to the next slide, the forward. This slide is good. This slide would be the, the numbers that we will use in open enrollment. If you pass this, if you vote for this tonight, those will be the numbers we'll put in there. And, and those are the numbers that come from the spreadsheet that we, we did in the budget meeting, except for a little bit less on the, the PPOs. The last slide, one more. Open enrollment, education, very important that we, we do a good job. We're, we're getting this done early. We're actually talking about open enrollment, starting on May thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one. And so that's coming up very soon. We're gonna make it mandatory open enrollment. We're, take attendance and we're gonna make sure that everybody has, has a chance to, to have this discussion. We don't want people not knowing about it. We don't want people having questions that aren't answered and we don't want to make, we want to make sure that everybody, if they, if they do sign up, that they document that even if they're gonna change, you're not gonna change, because I don't want somebody saying, wow, I didn't know about this, or I didn't know the impact. The high deductible, we worry about the high deductible, because you, you have to have some self-discipline to make sure you put that money aside in the HSA. We'll, so we'll extensive outreach. We're also doing a reorientation coming up in, in May, so we'll, we'll talk about it then. Supervisors, what we found in, in our discussions is that the number one person that an employee goes to talk to about their, their healthcare is, is their supervisor. That's the person they have that day-to-day contact, will make sure that, that they're aware. And every department kind of has their gurus, the people that, that really know this stuff. And so we'll, we'll make sure that they are aware, one-on-one with advisement from, from HR. And, and again, we're gonna document that, that people were informed and document that they made the change or document that decided not to make the change. And, and I, I, that's all I have for, for council, but I, I know that this is very important to you about the education and, and the fact that we're going to an HSA, gives it more options and allows a, a young, healthy family to possibly put a little bit more money in their, in their pocket. Mayor, thank you. Counsel, thank you very much.
Thank you. I want to make a comment.
We have Rachel on the, we have Rachel on the line if you have any technical questions on any of this.
You bet. I, I do want to really give a big shout out and thanks to the task force, Freddie and Jesse, and to our staff. We have been meeting throughout the year instead of bringing, at the end of the year where we just get it slammed to our council. So this is our recommendation. You know, I think it's, it's a, it's a option, you know, it's a zero percent increase on their benefits, but the only ones, the ones that are gonna see through it all is the PPOs. The PPO is gonna see the increase only because of the ratio. They're not gonna see it because of the health plan, but it's because of the ratio. But I do caution and, and I really encourage every employee to have that one-on-one sit-down with your own, with Pam, Chris, whoever is gonna explain this, because if you go to a high deductible HSA and you don't have the discipline to put the money away, you could get yourself in trouble. You know, you could, you, you can put up to seventy-two hundred dollars a year in that account and the city's gonna match two thousand of that, one for one up to two thousand. So you need to put money away because you're gonna see, and I'll give you an example, an MRI. If you go in for an MRI, those are usually about, what, twenty-five hundred dollars, something like that? A, a high deductible, you're gonna have to pay the full bill until you meet your deductible and then you go to twenty percent. So look at the breakdown of everything. I would, if any of the employees are online, make sure that you sit down one-on-one, that this is what you want to go to. Because, you know, yeah, it's, it's way less. If you're an HMO family, you're paying six hundred and fifty-seven dollars a month and then you go to twenty dollars a month, that's a big cut that you're gonna be a lot more money taking home, but you have to have the discipline to put that money into an HSA account, because you could get yourself in trouble.
And Mayor and members of council, if you have that discipline the first year and you put, you just say, okay, I'm, I'm not gonna bring home that much more money, I'm gonna put it in the HSA, get the match from the city, which is five hundred initial, and then we'll match up to the, the maximum. And then if you do good, then the next year you don't have to maybe put so much in the match and you can back off of that. They get, I, I talked to some people that have done this before, getting through that first year clean gives you a stockpile of, of money. So I don't mean to cut in, but, but that's kind of the strategy.
And I think we'll continue this task force. I think next year we'll look into FSAs and lower deductibles, but this is an option. You know, if you're happy where you're at, stay where you're at. But if you want to take the, the chance and, and try and, you know, put some money in your pocket, this is an option for, for some of the employees.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, talk to your spouses too. This is a partnership. And, and get, take it home, talk to them, bring back the questions, because that's what, what I've learned through experience is you gotta make sure you're both on the same page, because it's gonna, it's gonna hurt the family pocketbook if you do it wrong.
You bet.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Fernando.
This question's for, for Rachel. I work in insurance and I used to do individual medical and there were a couple plans that were designed for like the average person. The average person might need to go get a prescription twice a year. So it would be basically a high deductible plan with the caveat that you would get two visits at a copay rate. Is that something that we looked at or do you know any of your other groups that offer something like that?
Uh, for the high deductible plan, it's not, they don't have any copays. I will say this plan does have a list of preventative drugs. And if a drug is on that list, you can go right to the coinsurance, the eighty-twenty crosshair, instead of having to pay the whole amount once you're deductible. And this also does have preventative visits covered at a hundred percent. But, you know, for the Blue Cross plans and then to be compliant with, you know, the high deductible plan in order to get the HSA, you didn't have a copay option.
Okay. And then the other question I have is, I know Blue Cross and Blue Shield probably negotiates what they pay. So any example where the mayor gave an MRI, maybe street cost would be twenty-five hundred dollars. Would that be what an, in, one of our employees would pay on the high deductible plan or would they get a negotiated price that Blue Cross and Blue Shield has agreed to with the facility?
Yeah, so if they see a network provider, they'll pay the negotiator, the allowed amount and not the billed amount. So we'll have a discount on it. I would recommend that participants log on to, it's easyblue is the website, log into their account, you can see your past history and it should tell you what the, that allowed amount is and that could give you an idea of how much future visits might cost you.
Okay. And so like in that MRI example, once they hit their deductible, it would be an eighty-twenty, but if they were in the high HSA plan and didn't hit their deductible, they would pay that negotiated price. Okay. Thank you.
Right. So no matter about, you know, you're gonna be billed off that negotiated price, so let's say twenty-five hundred is the negotiated price. So if you haven't met your deductible, you're paying the full, you know, twenty-five hundred. Let's say if you had met your deductible, then you'd pay, you know, the eighty-twenty split on that twenty-five hundred, if that's the negotiated amount.
Okay. Thank you.
Rachel, one question too. Say somebody gets an HSA, a high deductible and it's the first month and I, and, and we've discussed is the city will put five hundred dollars into their HSA, HSA right away and whatever the employee wants to put in. But say the first month they have that big bill that's six thousand dollars and they don't have enough money in their HD, can they make payment plan that they know in the future they're gonna be receiving so much amount in the future? Can they make payments for the future with that plan?
Um, so that would be something that would be, I guess, negotiated with, with the hospital, if you're talking about bill like that at the hospital. I know I've been to a hospital and we're still in the emergency room and they're checking us in for impatient and they're like, hey, you'll give us the payment. And I've asked, bill me later, you know, I would try to do those kind of things upfront, that's best, to work those situations out and typically they, they can work with you and do installment plans. But, you know, each provider's different. Some providers, a pediatrician, they want payment right upfront for services. So that is the tough thing that we discuss. It's, it's at that very beginning, it's, it's a challenge to get started. But once you have that balance growing, it definitely gets easier.
This is Fernando again. So in that example though, if I were an employee, I would take my payment and put it into my HSA until I maxed out my match, because then I could turn two fifty into five hundred, instead of trying to make a payment and not getting my match.
Because the city's gonna match one to one up to, up to two thousand dollars for a family, fifteen hundred for a single and five hundred, I think it is for.
Thousand for.
Thousand for singles. Yeah, yeah, you're right. Double your money as you're moving forward.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Rachel, I had one quick question. And I, I can't remember the type of health, health, health account it is, but I mean, when you're doing this high deductible, when you pay for this at, with your HSA, is it not like paying for cash and don't they give like a, a cash discount because they don't have to go through all this insurance paperwork and wait to be reimbursed? Is, is there a savings in that method?
No, a cash discount, so they don't even have to deal with the insurance company at all. But with the HSA, they're still, they're still gonna bill, you know, they're still gonna submit a claim to Blue Cross and Blue Cross is gonna adjudicate that claim and then whatever, you know, is your, your share, you can pay that with your, your HSA account.
Okay.
Mayor, so for the hospital, because I'm on the hospital board, one of the things that we look at, so Blue Cross and Blue Shield is gonna have a better negotiated price than your cash discount if you were paying it on your own. So generally you'd want to take their negotiated price.
Negotiated. That's interesting. So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, the, what we would like to do is, is have a motion and second to, to approve the contributions and authorize the city manager to sign the, the documentation. We're, we're moving pretty quick on this and we don't have the documents here, but it would just reflect these prices which are, are static. They have not increased from, from last year, which is a great benefit. And thank you to, to Jeannie and Rachel for, for making that happen. And then, then we would get this in place and we'd be, we'd be confirmed on what we print and what we offer in our open enrollment coming up May thirteenth by passing this now.
Go move.
Excellent.
We have a motion and second for approval of the health benefit, group health benefit plan. Is there any further discussion?
It's Jesse.
Jesse?
No, I didn't have anything else, Mayor.
Okay, call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay, any abstaining? Motion, pass.
Thank you, Mayor and council.
Thank you, council, and thank you, yeah, for the, the, the task force. I think it's a lot better, it was a lot better process.
Yeah, no, it was.
Jamming it down our throat at ten o'clock at night.
And Rachel. Rachel, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. Have a good evening.
Play with us.
So I do have one question. Jerry, presentation, is it, oh.
Four slides.
Four. The only reason is I know we have Rachel here and the other ones are gonna be on the consent and I know they're, they're here for, but it's up to you. I hate to keep you guys here. I don't mind moving a consent agenda if there's any questions, because I know we have some HPA recommendations. You okay with that?
Don't care. He's getting paid by the hours.
Okay. All right.
We're okay.
So we'll move them along. If, if you don't, if council doesn't mind, we can go to consent and then we can address.
Sure.
Okay.
Let's clean some of it up.
You gotta get used to our long meetings. So we'll go to consent agenda. So item five A is consideration of waiver of section dash two dash four dash ten prior discussion rule to allow action on the balance of the consent agenda. We have accounts payable five hundred and thirty-three thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars and seventy-four cents. Consideration of approval of council minutes. Consideration to approve the March twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one meeting minutes. Consideration of agreements and purchases less than twenty-five thousand. Consideration to possibly approve the historic preservation advisory commission's recommendation of approval for the Douglas Miles mural on south sites, on the south side of United Jewelry Building located at one thirty-five North Broad Street. We have consideration to possibly approve the historic preservation advisory commission's recommendation of approval for the historic district welcome packet. And last item E is consideration for approval of the arts advisory commission recommendation to support the iArt Globe initiative. So do we have anybody from the staff, from the council or the public that would want to remove any of these items for more, more discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I have, I have just one question, so I would request that we pull, what is it, five A? E.
Five E?
Yeah, five E.
I would request just to, just to get maybe a little bit of more information on C and D also.
C and D?
Yep, CDE. Any other ones?
Mr. Mayor, if there are no other discussions or considerations, I motion that we accept the consent agenda as read and remove items C, D, and E for further discussion.
A motion second for approval of the consent minus items C, D, and E. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed nay? Any abstaining? Motion pass. So we'll go to item C and that's consideration of the HPA advise, the historic preservation advisory commission's recommendation of approval for the Douglas Miles mural on the south side of the United Jewelry building located one thirty-five North Broad Street. And, uh, Rachel, you, they, everybody received the pictures of it, uh, of the mural itself?
You didn't, it was on your, it should be on your.
Yeah, it should, um, Mayor and Counsel, it should be in the packet, the rendering.
Yeah, it's right there. It's right there, Mike.
Um, the, the rendering isn't complete, complete. It's, it'll be more detailed and more colorful, but that's what the artist gave as an example or a jumping off point.
And Rachel, go ahead.
The south wall, that's the one facing the elevator?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's correct.
I'm like south.
Now, now, when you say thirty by fifty, is that the whole wall?
Yeah, it's a, it's a very tall.
Yeah, the very tall wall. And it's covered by a tree, somewhat covered by a tree also and.
I think, yeah, and a part of it. It's, it's, and there's also a, um, awning that's over the elevator. So the, the, um, company that's having it done on their building, they have to get a special lift to, to get past that awning. And we're, we're grateful that they want to contribute to our community and just bring more life to the downtown area.
I think it's, uh, I went and looked at the area. I think it'd be great. I know when people come in and they want to take pictures of the center of the arts, it really doesn't take away from that, you know, if they want to get that. But, you know, coming down, you know, North Broad, I think it'd be amazing to see that, that mural there.
And, and the artist, um, has some tribal, um, descent, but he tried to keep the, the mural la, like he tried to keep it more basic and not have anything that represents the tribe he's from or anything like that, just to keep it more generic. So that's kind of some history.
Mike.
Uh, Rachel, is, is there going to be like a, an explanation plaque or anything describing what his vision of, of the mural is? Or are you going to recognize the artist or anything? Is there going to be some?
Yeah, um, we did not discuss that aspect during our approval. That, that's a great idea. Um, we can, we can have that brought to, to the muralist's attention and also the, the company that's putting it on.
And he's the artist that, uh, started out doing the skateboard out there on the reservation?
I believe so. Yes. Yes.
Well, he's got a skateboard in the Smithsonian, so we should be, we should.
Yeah, we feel very honored.
Yeah, we should make a, an issue, a, a nice point about who the artist is and some of his history, I, you know, if it's possible.
Yeah, I love, I love that idea. I, I think that would be very respectful of him and his work.
And I guess as you see murals, it's, it's come to the future too. That's a stucco wall. So it's not a, I guess, what am I trying to say? It's not like painting a mural on the front of the center of the arts where it's the, the, the virgin brick that's on there. This is a stucco wall. It'll be, you know, I guess you'd want to stay away from painting on, you know, like, I guess the, the bricks and stuff like that, where it'd be a, a wall that you could paint a mural on.
Yeah. And that was something that was taken in consideration when, when that was proposed.
I think it looks great. We have a motion.
Yeah, I'll, I'll move to approve the mural.
Second.
A motion and a second for approval of the mural at United Jewelry. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed nay? Any abstaining? Motion pass. So item D is consideration to possibly approve the historic preservation advisory commission's recommendation of approval for the historic district welcome packet. Rachel.
So the whole initiative behind this packet was to help building owners kind of get a basic understanding of, of what we expected from the historic committee. A lot of, a lot of building owners, I think we're getting overwhelmed by trying to meet our guidelines and we wanted to make it easier for them and simplify it and make it more user friendly. And, um, it doesn't limit the amount of things they can do. We, we say to that in the packet, if they want more color options and things like that, it's just to help them if, if they're too timid to, to consider an option. It helps them simplify it so that we're not getting this sea beige effect.
Good Fernando.
I got a call today from a constituent who thought we were changing the rules and I, I said, no, I don't believe that we're changing any of the rules. You're just putting it together in a format that it's, anybody can kind of look at it and figure out where to go.
Yeah. So HVAC guidelines will remain the same. It's just a, it's a helpful way for a newbie to kind of get exposed to the process and different things that they can do, trying to make it more user friendly. So yeah, you're correct.
Rachel, I just want to commend you and your committee. Uh, I, I attended some of your meetings, but this has been a long time coming. This has been an issue for a long time. People were really, didn't really understand what the historic district and what was really required through there. And this is pretty simple, this whole packet. And, and it's amazing work that you guys have done in the short period of time. I know you've put many hours into this and, uh, I really commend you for that. The only other question I have is how do we mesh that? How do we communicate that to a new building owner that the historic preservation knows that those packets go to them immediately?
So what we are hoping to do is put it on our website. Cause that would eliminate the costs of producing these packets. Um, also having people like code enforcement or, or business development within the city, refer people to it. If they need help, this is a great point or resource that they can point to. I just want to add one more thing. I'm really grateful for my committee. They've done so much to help and, and they have a wealth of knowledge and, and I, I'm just grateful for all that they've done with this packet and other, other projects that we've been on. They're just, uh, really great community builders.
Yep. Doing a good job.
Good to see. Go ahead, Mike.
To you, Mayor. Uh, Rachel, thank you for everything you've done. I have a question though. I have an existing building. None of these colors. So do I have to paint?
No. So, so the.
Your grandfathered in.
Yeah, I threw myself in.
This is just if someone wants to make changes and they can, they can expand. There's more, there's a wealth of historic colors. This is just to get them a starting off point if none of those color, or if none of those colors suit your preference, there's a, a bigger array that you could go to. And it's not requiring those who are already have, like already have a building to paint or to change or to change signage or whatever. It's just when changes present to them, like if they want a change, it makes it easier to like mend through what changes can happen. You're good. You're good. I won't be knocking on your door. You're good.
We have a motion to accept the welcome packets.
Second.
Motion second for acceptance of the welcome packet. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay? Any abstaining? Motion pass. Sorry, missed you, Jesse.
Okay.
Item E, consideration for possible approve the arts advisory commission recommendation to support the I art globe initiative. Mike, you had a question on that?
Yeah, I, I just need, uh, the I art globe group or initiative, are the, are these people all part of the, um, the proposal that, that, uh?
Thea?
Yeah.
Yes, the policies and.
That, that's a policies and procedures manuals. This isn't related to that.
Not related to that.
This is separate that they're like.
This is a, this is a project that Thea's been working very closely on with, with the city. And then we've met about this a number of times. Um, and it is a, a list of projects that, that the, um, uh, arts commission is, is determined are, are valuable and would like council to support these projects.
Okay.
Um, and under the, under the old set of rules and guidelines and correct me if I'm, uh, you know, get this wrong or, or can better explain it. Um, but, but they're ask, they're asking for support of, of any of these. If, if council were to see any project in here, they thought maybe didn't fit the best interest of the city, or maybe wasn't a good fit for, for globe. Maybe it was, you know, uh, uh, who knows what it might be. I hate to even offer an example because I don't want to jinx it, but the, uh, but that's what you would be looking for. So with the council would vote tonight is to approve them to, um, to support these projects. Now, the same advisory group that is supporting these projects, members of that will probably break off and, and not acting as specifically under the guise of this group, but, um, trying to coordinate, trying to perform the projects to, to get, get out there and do that. Um, just as council, uh, sits here and meets as a, as a body, each of you go out and do volunteer work on your own with no connection to, to, to the, the body or being asked to do it as a, as a promotional thing. Um, you know, with the, with the mob and stuff and the cleanup and rotary or whatever it might do. Now, if they want, if the I heart globe group wanted to partner with the city in getting some of these done, which they already have, then they're going to file a, um, a special event, um, permit, which just happens to be the, the best vehicle we have to say, how do I get barricades? So we can, we're painting offsite private wall, but we're going to spill into the street. How do we get barricades there? Um, one of the projects is a crosswalk project and that is on the city property. Um, so we need to, to block off the street for a time and we're working on those. So each of these in, in may or may not come back to the city on a, on a, a level of, of partnership. It may be that, that we do want a partnership and might come back and look for, for more help, may look for financial help. But, but this is the first part of this very ambitious and very positive, um, group of projects. So they can just start knocking them out and then we'll just deal with each one individually.
And this would allow the, the advisory group to work on the I art stuff by us approving this.
Right. So it's, it's not real clean because it, it's duplication of, of people, but, um, but it gives the city that blessing because that's the, the best thing we want. We don't want our, um, any, whether they're a member of the, um, arts commission or not, um, going down and doing project that council's not aware of, but council doesn't find benefit in.
Right, right.
Uh, may I speak?
Who's that? Oh, hi, Sherri.
Yeah, go ahead.
Would it be appropriate for me to say something?
Yeah, Sherri, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Um, I have been attending, um, the arts, I'm on HPAK and I have been attending, um, the meetings since last September. And the thing that, uh, Thea clarified for me, because I was really confused because on their agendas, they've been talking about the I art globe for months and months and months. I thought it was a subcommittee of the arts commission. Thea informed me that she just happens to be that, that it's a separate entity and they're looking for city support for what they're going to do. But the arts commission is city, is a city commission and the other is separate and apart because she was saying something about, I happen to wear hats for both of them. I'm the chairman for both. So I asked her to clarify it at the party meeting for me and she very nicely did. So I just hope that everyone understands that one, it belongs to the city and one is a community organization.
Yes. No, I, I, I think that's a good way to, to explain that. Um, there is a lot of, but this, this clears a way for them to move forward with the, the blessing of the city, at least in the, um, the, the content of the initiative, the types of artwork. And then, um, what, what I found works best right now is just take them one at a time as they come forward. Got, we'll just keep dealing with them, each one, and, and just getting them to happen. Uh, we're not so much talking, but a lot more doing and, and we'll tackle each, each issue as it comes forward.
Yeah.
With, with them. And, um, but this, this clears a big hurdle for them.
Yeah, Mike, you know, I, I just wanted to make sure because we, you know, she had presented the, the policy and procedures for.
That's still coming back to us.
Yeah.
And we, and we, we want to have a, a group meeting, uh, a subcommittee or, or committee meeting of those policies when they do come back.
Okay.
But this, they're not in conflict.
Okay.
And this, uh, these programs go back to kind of Fernando's, uh, town halls about the projects in downtown, you know?
Oh, yeah.
She identifies the lead, the, the people that are taking the lead on these. So take the lead, find the funding, find, you know, find the resources, then come back and present it and, and ask. That's really what it is.
Clear on it. That, that makes it good for me. Yep. So with that, I would make a motion that, oh, so I'm sorry.
I just want to add one thing.
Go ahead, Fred.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, and I think it's already been said, but, um, you know, there's numerous projects listed and, um, you know, in the language, it's, you know, it says that some of it can be done soon, within weeks, months, and some of them could be done in years or it would take years. Um, so I think it's really important that we bring them back one at a time for council because in, in years you, you may have a different council and you probably.
We will.
Um, and so, uh, it would be difficult for us to encumber something, uh, on other future council members, uh, to accept. Uh, so I think one at a time is, is, or not one at a time, but as they are, present themselves, that council would have the opportunity to, uh, uh, make a decision.
Well, and Mr. Mayor, Members Counsel, Councilman Rios, i- if one of these projects, um, uh, was, was, if you approved this now and, and, uh, they go off and, uh, the, the intent is that, that they may very well without having to come back to the city unless they want a, a full-blown partnership, unless they want money, unless they want resources assigned. But if they're doing it totally on their own or with a simple assistance from the city through a special event permit or donation, it, some of these may not come back to the council. And so you may want to just say that, um, a stipulation that, that this is up until, um, you know, November, December of twenty twenty-two, that, that this is, they're put a time limit that, that this council, um, until we have a, an seat of new council. But, um, and you're right, some of it, there's a lot of, a lot of projects on here. Uh, Thea does not, I would, Thea would, if was, Thea was here, she would say, these will be done before twenty twenty.
You can put timeframes on them.
So.
I wouldn't bet against her.
I wouldn't either.
But, but, um, but no, that, just, just so you understand, many of these you may not see again. They may just pop up and, and they'll be there if they're done by, um, uh, by a, a nonprofit or a group of involved citizens and there's not a lot of hoopla.
Like the one that Fernando's working on over there on the corner. I mean, it just says they're going to finish the.
Yeah.
The top, yeah. Yeah, the top. I mean.
Historical may see a lot of them because if they're in the downtown area.
Yeah.
Now, but in, in one of them, the, the crosswalk, um, where they're painting the, the crosswalk in front of the veterans or American.
VFW down.
VFW.
South Street.
The, that's going to come back to us only because we are the property owner. And if a nonprofit wants to paint on, on a structure, they should get the permission of the property owner. And so I, I think we're going to ask them just to, to share with, with everyone kind of what they're doing. And we want to make sure that, that, uh, the legion's okay with that. Um, but that's not because of any requirement other than it is our property and, and anytime an, uh, avid group of artists go to paint something, they should make sure they have the permission of the property owner.
Well, and I think the real value here is that the advisory, arts advisory group can deal with these because they have our blessing to, to help. And I think that's what they're really looking for.
You bet. And they get the residents excited and involved in, in the community and getting these things done.
Sure.
That's what we're going to need.
So with that, I would make a recommendation that, uh, five, five E?
E.
Prove the arts advisory commission recommendation to support the I art globe initiative.
And did you want to put a stipulation of a time limit on the approval? With a, with a time limit of.
Next election.
Yeah, the next election before.
Through twenty twenty-two?
Yep.
And then review it then?
Whoever's, if they carry over such a project.
Yeah.
I'll second that. Cause she'll be done before then.
Motion second to, for approval of the I art globe initiative. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed nay? Any abstaining? Motion pass. Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, Members Counsel, you, like I say, the, the city globe really appreciates Thea and her group. And, uh, we've been, we've been working very closely and, and we, I think we kind of got our, our groove down on, on how we interact. It's been going very smoothly. I'm very happy about that.
Hey Jerry, we're sorry, Rich, we're sorry.
All right.
So we'll go to your presentation and this is going to be. Now we're jumping around everywhere.
Jerry?
Four. No.
Five, I think.
Presentation to update council on bridge eighty-six oh three Upper Pinal Creek project, Connie's Bridge.
Here we go. So Jesse's kind of over me, but if you look on, if you look on the slide here, it shows you the project flow chart that we showed you earlier. I wanted to show you that we were in the design phase at the 95% plans. We are, we are past the 60%, up to 95%, and we're waiting on decisions from you tonight to move to the 100% plans. We're already meeting with the utility companies, talking about relocations and so forth. We're almost there. So tonight, we're here to talk to you about lighting. There's a couple of different options for lighting. You see the railing, this is through the public meetings and through the council's direction, was this railroad-like railing to go on the bridge that kind of goes along with the theme of the railroad being right there. This first option is in-rail lighting. It would be the length of the bridge only. And we really only have two real options for you to look at. The second one is the in-rail option with the acorn lights at both ends. And it's a little different, and at both ends, there is a little park-like area, parklet area. And so we thought this was a good option rather than just the inline, and we wanted to see what council, that's a little bit of cost, but we're building a multimillion-dollar bridge. So we're bringing it to council and trying to figure out which option that you prefer.
I think it carries the theme of all the lights in the city to the bridge. It makes sense.
So it's option two with the acorn. Yeah, I think it's important that we, because we've made it a pedestrian bridge also, to leave the in-rail lighting in one way or another. That's why we showed that in both options. But the acorn lighting, Rick actually prefers that one as well, so.
And you're going to plant the trees, too?
So, so the trees are already there. We just got to work around them. But anyway, that's truthfully the only options that I have. And we have, we have to have a decision from council, is we're there. I mean, we're pursuing the design. I figured this, by this fall, we'll be ready to bid out the project, so.
How long is it going to take to construct once you start?
It'd probably take five months, maybe?
Five months?
Yeah, five months. We're still pursuing some funding options through the legislature to do some of the work as well, so, which includes the demolition of the old bridge. And so we're still, still looking forward to that. But this is pretty simple, either one or two, and, but we need that to move to the 100% plans.
Number two?
I say number two.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Mike.
I'd like to thank Jerry for sticking around and allowing us to do other council business before his presentation. I really appreciate that, Jerry.
Yeah, so Paul, Paul fortunately put my other items on last, so.
He could be here anywhere.
But what I really appreciate is Rick Powers sticking around, and then Matt Truitt's on the phone as well.
See, what I heard is, I made all the decisions for you, but I'm letting you guys make this one.
No, actually, the public made the other decisions. The public made the other decisions. That's why we had the public meeting.
One question, Jerry, can you get a couple extra acorn lights so we can put them on the entrance of North Broad?
You know what? Council controls the budget, so I can do anything you ask me to.
Need to put something there, too.
Yeah, I can do anything you ask me to, Mayor. So the other thing I wanted to mimic is, or I wanted to tell you that what you choose tonight, we're going to try to mimic on the Cottonwood Bridge as well. And they actually picked a designer today, Jacob's Engineering. And so we're going to, we know them pretty well because Rick came from there. And so we are going to try to work with them to make sure we have a mimic of this bridge on the Cottonwood Bridge as well, with the railing and the lighting and everything as well. We're going to try. We don't control the bridge, but we're going to try.
Go ahead, Fred. Thank you. So that said, you know, your template's already there. The Cottonwood Bridge, would that reduce some costs?
So we hope it will. But like you say, we're not controlling the procurement on it, A-DOT is, so.
I'm just saying, a lot of the design has already been established, right?
Yeah. Come in.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. To answer your question, Councilman Rios, what they will do on the Cottonwood Bridge is similar to what we did on Connie's Bridge, Upper Pinal Creek Bridge, is they will do an assessment of bridge type, and they will choose the type of bridge that is most likely going to be similar to the other bridge, just due to the geometry and the flow. So it'll probably be, they're saying now, probably a two-span, maybe a three-span. It's a little longer bridge, so it might be a three-span concrete slab bridge. So it would be, have the same appearance as the other one. But they would have to go through an analysis and determine the length and everything of those piers to allow the flows to go through and that sort of thing.
So that drives, that's what drives the cost?
Yeah. The good thing, the good thing about the Cottonwood Bridge is there's not a lot of roadway approach to it. The cost to the other one was adding all the approach roads and railroad crossing and all that. This is just putting the bridge back in place. This will go in in the exact same location. It's going to go in at the similar width and length as the current bridge, so it's a little more straightforward.
Great, thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
Thank you, Rich. And Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, just one quick question for Jerry, and Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, we're, you know, council's very lucky to have a person of Jerry's caliber and knowledge to be able to do these projects. And he also has learned a new skill in grabbing, if, if what, if the state legislature passes what we hope they'll pass, then you have the additional money to finish the Hill Street. Will that impact anything on the construction of this? Will any design changes, or is it be seamless?
It will eliminate the city demoing the bridge. It will aid in us paying the railroad for their part of it, and it will be very seamless.
And then also improve the road, Hill Street up to?
So it allows us to change some vertical alignment as well, because we know that's coming up to it. So, you know, rather than have a bridge, we will have a bridge at the end of a road, basically, so.
One of our goals is to make intersections a little bit more useful and common sense, so. Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, Jerry, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
At 100% plans?
No.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. So we're figuring sometime this fall, go out to procurement and... We'll see, we'll see where the plans are. But this time next year, we should have a bridge.
Good. Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you. Thanks, Rick.
New business, Item A, council will receive an update on District 5 council vacancy and direct staff to possibly schedule applicant interviews for May 11, 2021 meeting. Shelley.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Council directed staff at the last meeting, which was the April 13 meeting, to put out our advertisement for the vacancy in District 5. We've advertised through Facebook, through our website, and also through the silver belt. Where, it was a 14-day window, I think, that council wanted to advertise, which is up next Wednesday, the 5th. And I've received two viable applications for District 5. We're seeing council direction tonight to plan for the May 11 council meeting to schedule the interviews, and maybe direct the clerk to gather questions.
Do we need a vote on that to move forward, or what do we, because that's on a new business item?
Yeah, it's on a new business. I would say a simple motion to proceed with interviews on the May 11 would be, and collect interview questions, would be the motion.
And waive the rule?
And waive the, no, because we could come back and vote again. This would be not the last time that we talk about this, so no need to waive the rules.
Motion made.
Second.
Motion to second to approve Item A, May 11 interviews for the vacancy of District 5. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Any abstaining? Motion pass. Great, thank you. Action items, Item A, discussion and consideration to approve Resolution 1832 and Ordinance Number 870, amending Chapter 12 of the City Code by adding Article 12-4, grading and drainage. Shelley, can you read Resolution 1832, please, and Ordinance 870?
Mayor, Council, Resolution Number 1832, a resolution of the Mayor and Council of the City of Globe, Arizona, declaring as a public record that certain document filed with the city clerk and entitled Article 12-4, grading and drainage of the City Code for purposes of adoption by reference. Ordinance Number 870, an ordinance of the Mayor and Common Council of the City of Globe, Hela County, Arizona, adding Article 12-4 to Chapter 12, building of the City Code in order to make provisions for grading and drainage permits and providing for enforcement and penalties. Is council pleased with that reading?
Yes. Jerry.
Mayor, Members of Council, this is the second time we brought this item in. The city staff would like to have the ability to have permits to control drainage and the placement of dirt or the excavation of dirt within, within the city limits, anyway. So it protects the city, it protects the residents, and it makes sure that whoever buys that property afterwards has a viable spot to build on. So it's something that is in every city, and we did not have a part of the City Code that addressed that. So that's why Chris and I worked on that.
Mr. Mayor, I would recommend that we approve the resolution as presented.
Second.
Motion to second for approval, Resolution 1832 and Ordinance 870. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Any abstaining? Motion pass. Item B, discussion and consideration to approve Ordinance 871 and Resolution 1833, replacing Article 9-10 of the City Code, regulating and permitting work in right-of-ways. Jerry, and Shelley, can you read Ordinance 871 and Resolution 1833?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance Number 871, an ordinance of the Mayor and Common Council of the City of Globe, Hela County, Arizona, replacing Article 9-10, street excavation with Article 9-10, regulating and permitting work in public right-of-ways in Chapter 9, water sewer streets of the City Code, in order to make provisions for work conducted within city right-of-ways and providing for enforcement and penalties. Resolution Number 1833, a resolution of the Mayor and Council of the City of Globe, Arizona, declaring as a public record that certain document filed with the city clerk and entitled Article 9-10, regulating and permitting work in public right-of-ways of the City Code for purposes of adoption by reference. Is council pleased with the reading?
Yes.
Vice Mayor, Members of Council, this again is a second reading on this. We want the ability to tell contractors and property owners what they can do adjacent to city property, whether it be the street or sidewalk or whatever. We want to make sure they get a permit to join to us in a safe way, and that meets our City Code. So that's what that's all about. And again, Chris and I felt like the City Code needed amended here.
Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, I would make a motion that we accept Resolution Number 1833 and Ordinance 871 as presented tonight.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any opposing, nay? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes. Item C, discussion and consideration of the Hela County intergovernmental agreement, which would employ two summer youth interns with the City of Globe through 2021 summer youth.
Good evening, Vice Member, Vice Mayor, Members of the Council. We're bringing this back the second time. This IGA will allow us to bring in the two summer interns, and I believe there's some money that the county kicks in on this and helps with this. So they, this will be our third year, I believe, that we've been doing this. Great program for these kids, and they're a great help for us.
Did we do four last year, Chris?
I'm sorry?
Did we do four last year?
Yeah, we did four the first year and four the second year. But I think with COVID budget cuts, we got down to two on this one.
Mr. Vice Mayor, you know, this is obviously a great program, and it's proven to be very beneficial to our youth. I motion that we move forward with the IGA and approve the, I'm sorry, the two student employees to be hired for the summer program.
Let's take that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any opposing, say nay? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes.
Thank you.
Oh, here. Thank you, Mike.
The mayor's back.
Which one are you, 70? Discussion and consideration to award contract number CS-2021-0003 to American Fence Company in Arizona, of Arizona, for the wastewater treatment plant perimeter fence replacement in the amount of $47,129.38, with an owner's contingency of 15% of $7,069.41. The funds of $54,198.79 will come from account number 51-80-52200, wastewater capital outlay construction. Jerry?
Mr. Members, Members of the Council, we went out to get quotes on this, bids on this, and had four bidders come back in. American Fence was low at, I think it was $47,000. Then we added owner's contingency of 15% to bring it up to $54,198.79. This is at the wastewater plant. The fence was full of holes. It was old. It was, might have been hit once or twice by equipment, so it needed replacing in order for us to get security. The other thing that was a great improvement on this, will be on this project, is the gated area. It'd be easier to get open and so forth, and more accessible for our people. So with all the improvements out there, we want to make things secure as well. Ready?
Thank you, Mayor. Jerry, I didn't see any floor plan or anything, but does this encompass the entire plant or partial?
Yes.
Entire?
Well, it, it, it includes the entire plant to make sure that in the... Well, it, it, it includes the entire plant to make sure that, that in the areas that the fence wasn't good. So it's not a complete.
Okay.
So, and Vince might be calling me to correct me, but I believe that to be true.
A partial replacement.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion that we award contract number CS 2021 dash zero 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 three to American Fence Company of Arizona for the wastewater treatment plant perimeter fence replacement as expressed to us tonight, as presented to us tonight.
Second.
Motion second for approval, item D. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Any abstaining? Motion pass.
And Councilman Reyes, I just looked on the bid. It's thirteen hundred feet.
Thirteen hundred feet, okay. Item E is consideration to prove contract agreement form number CA dash two zero two one dash zero zero one three utilizing the cooperative agreement with Pinell County and Cactus Asphalt Contract Number One Seven Five Nine Three Two to complete seal, coat, and asphalt projects at various locations throughout the city of Globe in the amount not to exceed seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars to be funded through HERF, one half cent excise tax, and other budgeted items. Jerry?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, so when I say other budget, I, I mean, everything is left over that has to do with asphalt because I want to turn as much black as I possibly can. So the only mill and fill that we have on the program this year is the street up at Taco Bell, that little short street between the gas station and Taco Bell. It's completely gone. So we're gonna, we're gonna repair that this year. We didn't really have the budget to do the other projects that we had planned. You know, there's always CDPG, but I haven't got there yet. But that's my plug, Paul. So anyway, these projects will be mostly chip seal and fogs and they're in all six districts. So. And I think I sent out a earlier plan of what we were gonna do.
Go ahead.
I don't remember seeing it.
Through you, Mayor. Jerry, normally we do choose streets in our district. I haven't received anything this year.
Yes. So this year, because of our less help, because we did not have the DOCs, we were only able to crack seal the worst of the streets. And so those are the only ones we're going to get chip sealed. Before we would chip seal twice as many streets as what we needed. And when I say chip seal, I meant, I meant crack seal. We would crack seal twice as many streets and we would put those out to you. We just didn't have time to do it this year. We, we were able to chip seal everything that we felt was the worst. So yeah, hopefully next year we'll, we'll be out there doing twice as much of what we need because, because that's really the best thing for the streets is to be able to do twice as much crack sealing and do half as much chip sealed than the next year, you know, chip seal on the other half plus whatever else you got. But, but this year we weren't able to do that. We just didn't have enough time.
And the street, like you said, between Taco Bell and the gas station is going to be completely redone?
It's going to be a two inch milling fill on that. So, so yeah, we had planned, we had planned to do a couple of the streets, but you know, we would have needed another hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand dollars and we just didn't have it in the budget.
Thank you.
Now, Jerry, that street kind of goes up the hill and turns into a gravel road. We're not doing the gravel part.
No, we're not doing the gravel road. Just, just the asphalt between the businesses there. We thought that was real important because it is our street and you know, there's a lot of traffic on it.
I was just gonna say, there's a lot of traffic there.
A lot of traffic on that.
Heavy traffic.
It's going to be a real challenge to pave because of the traffic on it.
For approval?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we approve contract agreement number CA 2021 dash zero zero thirteen as presented tonight by Mr. Barnes.
Motion and a second for approval of item E. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? Any abstaining? Motion pass. Thank you, Jerry. Item F is complete. We go to late agenda items. None?
We got Sarah's letter.
Oh, yeah.
We do have a late agenda.
Tom O'Halloran, there you go.
That the letter?
Right, yeah. Mr. Mayor, members of council, we did want to add that this is something to help us get some additional funding from the, from the federal government, from Congressman O'Halloran. Would you be, is council accepting and discussing this tonight even though it was on the agenda late?
Sure.
So, Mr. Mayor, if you want to, want to read that, that would be great.
You want, you want the whole letter read?
No, no, just the, the item.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The eight A item.
Oh, I didn't get the, you know what? I got the old agenda. Oh, I'm sorry. Is there one here? I didn't grab it. Consideration of the mayor's signature on behalf of the city of Globe council for a letter of support to Congressman Tom O'Halloran for community project funding requests through the Army Corps of Engineers for continuing authorities program section 205 small flood drainage reduction projects, project for the McCormick Wash.
And Mr. Mayor, members of council, as you know, on our current strategic action plan is remedies for the McCormick Wash. We've been in communication with the Corps prior to the pandemic. We have communication now. We also have brought on Bob Holmes and Nexus Consulting as our federal lobbyists. And he was able to approach Congressman O'Halloran about possibly doing a, what would be considered earmark to cover the hundred thousand dollars for the feasibility study. In, in processing that, that request for the hundred thousand, they asked for a letter of confirmation from the, the entity, the, the city of Globe. And so this confirms with Congressman O'Halloran that the city of Globe does in fact, you know, request this hundred thousand dollars and from the body, not just from administration. And so we'll, if you approve this, Mayor, you'll sign on behalf of the council and we'll get this off to Congressman O'Halloran's office and keep our fingers crossed. We think we can gain that hundred thousand dollars, that money we would normally pay, it would come from, from Congress to start that feasibility study. Feasibility study would determine what it will cost to actually solve the McCormick Wash and possibly get us a new start and federal funding for that. Jerry, did I miss anything? No, this is just to pay for the, the.
Yeah, this is just our match, hundred thousand.
What? Yeah. And let me get some clarification on, on that.
Yeah.
Okay. But, but it would be, this is to get that assistance from Congressman O'Halloran.
I would move that we authorize the mayor to execute this letter and to waive the rules so we can take action tonight.
Second.
Motion second for approval of the letter and waiving of the rules to vote on tonight. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? Any abstaining? Motion pass. Call to the public. Any other comments and call to the public? Shelley? Thank you. Scheduling the meetings?
Just a, just a reminder that we do have a strategic action plan meeting set for, let me get my calendar.
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, three to seven. It'd be out at.
Seventh or the fourth?
Wait, next Tuesday. Let me look.
May fourth.
That was the fourth.
Yeah, not the, it's a Tuesday. It's, yeah, Tuesday, the fourth. In lieu of the three, three to, three to seven.
Three o'clock?
Three to seven.
Three to seven, that's good. I can do that.
Okay.
Where at?
We're doing Beschbauer.
Oh, we're gonna do it at Beth? We're not doing it at the hospital. We were gonna do it at the hospital, weren't we?
We were going to at first.
They, they don't have any meeting rooms available.
Oh. Fernando.
Yeah, the smaller room.
Mr. Mayor, I, I did have a call to the public come, come in.
Okay.
Right now. So it's from James Haley. He says, honorable mayor and council, the old, the old pool should be raised and a new pool should be planned for. I remember that the structural problems with the existing pool were estimated to be more costly to mitigate than designing and building an entirely new pool. Best regards.
Any future agenda items?
How about an update on the Burger King long-term project?
The, um.
We got all kinds of gift cards for Burger King, man.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd prefer to email out something to council on, on the status of that.
Okay.
Okay.
You have motion to go into executive session?
Motion made.
Motion second for to go into E session. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? Motion pass. Any opposed? Nay. Motion pass.